Alright, here we go everybody. The time has come for the Monday, August 19th, 2019, regular Waukegan City Council meeting. Roll call please.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Mayor Cunningham.
Uh, present. Uh, to lead us in invocation will be Mr. Todd E. Fletcher from the First Baptist Church of Lake Forest. Mr. Fletcher, please take the podium. Immediately following that, our... Our young ladies will also be leading us into place. Ladies, right after the prayer, you're gonna stand up and lead us in prayer, okay? All rise.
Amen, let us pray. Precious Father, Lord God, we just so humbly coming for thy presence right now. Father God, we thank you, oh God, for this, Father, just another day, oh God. But, oh God, another day, Father, for each and every one of us, Father, to get better. Father, I ask, oh God, that you bless the leadership, oh God, of this great city, oh God. Bless the mayor, oh God, the Aldemans, oh God, uh, bless the people of this city, oh God. So, we use this, oh God, this meeting, Father, as another opportunity, oh God, just to get a little bit better, oh God. Let us see and understand, oh God, that our differences, oh, Father, is just another opportunity, Father, for us to find common ground, oh God, and let that ground, oh God, be foundational, oh God, for us to build the things that you would have us to build, oh God, not just for today, but for each and every one of our tomorrows, oh God. We thank you, and it's in Jesus' name that we pray. We say, "Man, amen, amen."
And ladies, step four. Step four, young ladies. Turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda will be Mayor's comments. They're gonna be very brief, and I will, uh, say we have about brief presentations tonight, short ones, but they will, uh, show up with very meaningful, full information for our community. Senior Water Rebate Program. Our senior water rebate, uh, program applications will begin September 1st and extending through September 30th. All applications must contain a copy of the current, of your, of your, of the current year tax assessment to be considered complete. Please check our city website for more, uh, more information and details. Now, I think it's Tina. Tina, can also call the office. Doc, they can call the office as well to get information. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Alright. Uh, office means the water department, and it will help you out. Last weekend, there are a ton of great events this past weekend, and I wanna talk about one that I was a part of. I wanna say my, our ribs were the best. Real, uh, real men grill. Well, I, I see some competition is in the house. That's alright, but we had an awesome time, uh, at the all men grill, um, it was at Waukegan Community Church, and it was a fundraiser for Lions Academy. What an awesome time here. Good food, good tasting. It was boxing at the lakefront, Blues Night Out, Afro Fest, Glow Walk. These are just activities that the city of Waukegan, uh, are sponsoring as we move to becoming a destination spot, destination place in our ci- in the city of Waukegan downtown, on Lakefront. So, thank you to all those who participated. To our young men and young ladies who are in the house today, I know you're gonna like this. The first day of school for Waukegan Public Schools is Thursday, August 27th. To all the parents, vacation is about to begin. But in all seriousness, watch out for children crossing streets as they walk to school, and school buses picking up students. Um, and to speak of school buses, uh, the chief and I, along with our patrol division, we're gonna be out in our communities with our bus route. We've had some issues where individuals are not respecting, uh, the buses as kids cross the street.
Right, yeah.
We will be aggressive in issuing tickets, and if need be, um, arresting those. Everybody that's in this room today, you have a responsibility. When you see these individuals who are doing these things, some are late for work, they might have a, there is no really, real good reason. But you cannot disobey those bus stops. Can't. Unacceptable, can't be tolerated by all of us, and particularly for our middle school, the elementary school kids. So, help us out. The Illinois State Board of Education posted rules for motorists and stop school buses as we share the information on our website and Facebook page. And I'm asking you, please drive slowly. Upcoming events, uh, free Tuesday concerts that's signing for venue continues with the award-winning Waukegan High School Bulldogs Marching Band on the 20th. Shout Section, Big Band on the 27th, both at 7:30. Free visit Fridays with continuing downtown Waukegan every Friday through October. Long anticipated raid, library statue is arriving, and a dedication ceremony will take place on his 99th birthday, which is August 22nd, starting at 6:30 PM at Waukegan Public Library. The ceremony will include the Waukegan Symphony Orchestra, the statue unveiling, along with remarks by Mr. Zachary Oxman, who created the statue, along with our local dignitaries, family and friends. Alright, this is the part we're coming in. It's gonna be presentations. It looks like we have three of them. Three presentations tonight, so bear with us. That's probably why you see, uh, so many folks filling up the room. Uh, the first one, we're gonna start off with Flight for Life. I would, I'd like to bring up our fire chief, George Bridges, who is going to discuss Flight for Life Award and show. I am, chief, before you start, I am not putting any unnecessary pressure, but there is a five-minute limit to these presentations.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Um, you guys know that I love when someone takes an, uh, interest. Come on up, you guys. Someone takes an interest in what we do, especially you guys know I'm fond of our fire department. But, um, what I really love is one of, one of our peers wants to come in and recognize how good your Waukegan is once again. Not only the Waukegan Fire Department, the Waukegan Police Department, and our lifeline to this community are Waukegan dispatchers. So, at this time...
Dispatchers.
Dispatchers. At this time, I would like to bring, uh, turn the mic over. Can we have all of our firemen up here to the front? I would like to turn this over, because I'm not gonna be the one speaking on behalf of them. I'm gonna turn this over to Tammy Chapman from the, uh, Flight for Life.
Dispatchers, real dispatchers.
Five minutes, huh, Mayor? Thank you, sir. I will do my very best to adhere. Thank you, everyone that showed up tonight. It's great to see a crowded room, and thank you, Mayor and the city council for having us. And I'll try to be brief, but I wanna make sure that for the fourth time in our history in Flight for Life and McHenry, we are honoring the Waukegan Fire Department. And I also wanna share that it's a team effort. No one up here does it alone. It takes hours and days and months and years of training for these guys to do the job that they do, for these guys to do the job that they do, for law enforcement to do their job, and for our teams to do theirs. They do that for you guys. When you need them, they are there, and they are trained and ready to do the job. It doesn't come overnight, and it comes with experience. And I hope you, as a community, understand what that takes to be ready at that moment's notice, to show up... And do the job. So, just... Just to let you know what we're here for tonight, is this is the Flight for Life Scene Call of the Year Award that we are giving to Waukegan Fire. Like I said, it is a team effort, because if it weren't for dispatch, these guys would never go out the door. Law enforcement would never go out the door. We wouldn't come to the scene. This was a very exceptional call. It was very difficult extrication. Extrication is learned, because you spend hours training. You practice. You know, they call it the practice of medicine. This is the practice of extrication, and these guys did a phenomenal job. But once again, they would never have gone out the door without these guys. These are the people that are behind the phone, that never see the things that these guys see, but let me tell you, they hear it. And when they hear it, it doesn't go away. And the things that they see and that law enforcement sees doesn't go away, and our teams. We are a family of first responders, from the phone call to the end, when they go to the hospital. Why we give this award is we want to recognize those departments that go above and beyond the call, whether it's critical thinking, scene safety, whether it is extrication, the things that they need to do to give that patient the best chance at survival, and these guys did it. And it was an unbelievable call. They did amazing work, and we wanna honor them for that. What we do when we give this award, it's once a year, is that we provide them with a $500 educational grant, because one of the, um, parts of our mission at Flight for Life as a nonprofit is education. We give them a fabulous plaque, a landing zone kit, and we come out and we recognize them in their community. Because we all know, when we do something wrong, everybody is there with a cellphone...
Yeah.
And a video, and Facebook, and Twitter, and everything else out there. But where are they when we show up and we give everything we have to make a difference for a patient? Ain't nobody around. I'm from the south, by the way, so we have some different things we say. So, that's why we're here tonight. Sorry, Mayor, I know I'm over my five minutes, but, once in a while, you get the chance to tell people how good they are. So, I, I will, hope you will indulge me while I do some photos quickly, and we will get out of your hair, but I would like you to please give them a round of applause, 'cause they're awesome.
I'm backed up this way. For the first time, the mayor's...
Don't let her fall. We can't afford, we can't afford the liability. Don't let her fall. She's standing in a chair.
Yes.
Where's Katie? I'm sure she wouldn't approve of that.
Wow, she got tall all of a sudden.
I'm just checking my lighting. Okay, now, I want everyone in front, right over left. I want to make sure that every person can see me and I can see you, 'cause this is once.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, are you ready? One, two, three. One, two, more. One, two, three. You rather photograph animals than humans? Am I wrong? Okay, hang on one second. Now, we do one more. And one more. Thank you.
Alright, who do you have next? Lake County. They, they counting. Yeah, we're gonna do li- the, the next item, uh, the next pre- alright, we give them a couple minutes to leave. Y'all heard the siren go off. They gotta go resc- rescue somebody. And as the firefighters are leaving, uh, I wanna reiterate a very important aspects of our police and fire. That's called the 911 center. Folks, when you call, they are relaying what you tell them on the phone. If you do not give the in- if you give incorrect information over the phone, then they're gonna give incorrect information to the first responders. Sometimes we get complaints that they're asking too many questions. Asking those questions can save lives. That's why our 911 operators are so critical to this process. That is the first line of defense for first responders. And sometimes, they do not get the credit that is needed, because what you see on television, or when you see out in the streets, you see our police and fire doing it all. But guess who is sending those calls out? The ver- the voice that you heard over that mic was someone from the 911 center. And they're only relaying what you have given to them. So, can we all, right now, give them a big round of applause to the 911 operators? Uh, thank you very much. Alderman, uh, Alderman Rivera, I'm pretty sure you know what I mean by customer service guy. That's, that's a tough one. Alright, next up, we have, uh, Lake County Department of Transportation, uh, Kevin Carrier from Lake County, uh, Lake County IDOP, along with, uh, Commissioners Mary Ross Cunningham. Those who don't know, that's my mom. And next, Commissioner Angelo Kyle, gonna discuss upcoming 14th Street project. Kevin, where you at, Kevin? Come on up.
14th and Duckdale's gonna look, gonna look a little bit different.
Alright.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And, uh, first of all, I wanna thank you and the council, uh, and the citizens for, uh, their support of Afro Fest, uh, this past year. Uh, thank you for making it a great success. Also, David Motley and, uh, Kathleen, uh, as well, uh, was very helpful in that. Uh, want to quickly, um, give you, uh, the highlights of the 14th Street reconstruction of Green Bay to, from Green Bay Road to Sheridan Road. This project started in 2012. The purpose of the project was to improve safety, improve pavement condition, improve bicycle and sidewalk accommodations, minimize impacts to the Greenbelt Forest Preserve. This project has involved an effort of coordination from many stakeholders, including both communities, the Lake County Forest Preserve District and PACE. I wanna thank the city of Waukegan, as well as the city of North Chicago, for their coordination with Lake County to make this important project, uh, happen. And some of you might ask why we're mentioning North Chicago. Uh, the south side of 14th Street is North Chicago. The north side of 14th Street is Waukegan. Uh, Lake County Department of Transportation led the planning, engineering, and land acquisition and obtained the federal grant. This was a very involved process, which took us seven years to accomplish. The total construction cost was $18 million. $14 million was the federal share. Lake County Department of Transportation shared 3.3 million. North Chicago, 610,000, and Waukegan, 160,000. The reconstruction of 14th will feature the road diet with four lanes will be reduced to three, providing one lane in each direction of the center turn lane. This concept will improve safety, make room for the sidewalk bike paths, as well, in addition, multiple bus stop pads will be added throughout the project. The project will provide a new continuous trail connection to the Greenbelt Forest Preserve and the Robert McClory Bike Path. The existing four-way stop sign intersection at 14th Street and Duckdale will be converted into a roundabout. This requirement, this required a 90-day closure, which is currently underway at the corner of 14th and Duckdale. The entire project is expected to be completed by the end of 2020, with finishing touches such as landscaping and anticipated to 2021. At this time, Kevin will come and give you the...
Thank you. I'm a Commissioner too. Thank you, Commissioner Kyle. We all had a part in this project. Audrey and I, Angelo started it, but Audrey and I finished it. So, what he had, I don't have to read mine, 'cause we all got the same thing, the same, I got the same, you know, the part of the project. One side is 9th District, the other side is, is the 14th, 12th District, right? 14th District, I'm thinking about the 12th. 12th District. So, we all, you know, voted on this, but most of all, we all think Waukegan. We've been trying Waukegan to partner with this project for a long, long time. And we really appreciate the council and Waukegan for the last couple of years to come in and, and, uh, come to the plate, 'cause we're doing sidewalks all the way to, we're doing the street all the way to 14th Street, the abbots. And we're doing sidewalks all the way down, because we have nursing home, the Glen Lake Nursing Home, and the patient walk out in the middle of the street, 'cause there's no sidewalk. So, it will be sidewalks there, over there, and that's a good thing. And 'cause we had, I used to, I get so many calls, you know, the patient in the street during the winter months and all that good stuff. So, uh, uh, this is a good project. We got a roundabout. Uh, I was out there by myself when the roundabout, my late Audrey Nixon didn't like roundabouts, so she didn't vote on it, but we got it done. So, you know, the truth is, it's true, you know. I'm an honest person. So, uh, but, uh, Angelo come back and jumped right back in, and we got it going. We got it. So, we would've had it done earlier, but they was doing the housing on 14th Street over in the 12th District, the new houses. So, we said, "Let's wait until the houses get done, so the trucks wouldn't tear up the, the street, trying to fix it." So, now, you have a new street and new houses for the, for the citizen of North Chicago, and North Chicago is happy. This was done at North Chicago a couple of weeks ago. So, now, we brought it to Waukegan, resident taxpayers, and let them see why they dollars going. And this is your tax dollars, and we appreciate you for that. Thank you. Alright, Kevin, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, ladies and gentlemen in the council. Um, we probably cue, I just, I just came to play a quick video just to show you, uh, a little education on how to drive roundabouts. Uh, I know there's, there's some people that are, uh, when you first start driving them, they get a little nervous with them, but, um, two key takeaways, as long as you stay slow, and as long as you yield to people in the roundabout and people walking through, the pedestrians, um, they do a good job, so.
Modern roundabouts are becoming common around the United States and are a key component of the Lake County highway system. When driving through roundabouts, drivers should remember four simple things. Drive slowly, yield to traffic coming from the left and pedestrians, no passing, and for multi-lane roundabouts, pick the correct lane. Before you enter the roundabout, think about where you wanna go after the roundabout.
So, we are here about to drive the roundabout at Everton River Woods. And Bill Edson here, engineer with the Lake County Division of Transportation, is gonna show us how to do it. So, Bill, what is a roundabout?
Well, Ryan, a, a modern roundabout, it's a circular intersection where, as drivers approach, they steer to the right, and then they travel counterclockwise through the intersection, uh, around the center island. As you approach the roundabout, you're gonna look for pedestrians, you're gonna yield to those pedestrians, you're gonna yield to traffic that's in the roundabout, and then you're gonna exit at your preferred street. And again, as you're leaving, you're gonna watch for pedestrians. Uh, roundabouts have slower speeds, and they result in fewer severe crashes and reduced delays for driving. When you're driving through the roundabout and you're in the circle, don't stop to let anybody in. They need to wait for you to pass, pass by them. So, you're in the circle, it's your turn to go, you have the right of way.
Keep going.
Keep going.
Okay.
If they're outside of the circle, it's their turn to wait. They need to wait for you, and then they get to go when there's a gap.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, I've seen that. When I'm driving in, uh, I get into the circle, and then, uh, you know, I'm, I've always been worried. I'm not sure if that person entering, if I need to yield to them, but a- as you said, it makes sense. Once I'm in, I need to go in, keep going, and then get out, and they yield to me then.
Exactly.
Awesome. When I go into the roundabout, can I come out the other direction? So, basically, can I do a U-turn?
Yeah, so, a U-turn's fine. If you, if you wanna do a U-turn, you just go in the roundabout, you go all the way around, and you come back out the same side of the roundabout that you started.
Well, I know there's, there's that movie with, uh, Chevy Chase, I think it's European Vacation, where they get into the, the traffic circle, and they just keep going around and around and around.
Get out.
So, can we go in and just go for a joyride, go around a couple of times?
Well, we don't wanna go around as many times as you, uh, as you saw in the movies, but, um, it's okay to go around the roundabout an extra time if you realize you missed your spot. Lake County is a leader in building roundabouts in Illinois, and that's something we're really proud of. So, as of summer of 2015, we have four roundabouts built in the county, and we're working on a fifth right now at River Road and Roberts Road. We don't have any firm plans to build anymore, but we are considering, uh, whether a roundabout's appropriate for any of our roadway improvements every time we do a, a design and a planning project.
Roundabouts work well when drivers remember to drive slowly, yield to traffic from the left, don't pass, and choose the correct lane. Remember not to stop in the roundabout. Once you're in the roundabout, keep moving slowly to your destination. Other drivers should yield to you. For more information on Lake County roundabouts and to see more videos and resources, please visit the DOT website.
Alright, so thank you. If you have any questions, there are brochures and pamphlets out in the table outside, uh, with our contact information on there. Our website, a lot of this information is on our website, and I believe the city was posting a, a link to their website as well, so, um, thank you.
And then, uh, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Just be sure David Ross is gonna be posting this on our YouTube, uh, for YouTube, so those who wanna see it again and again and again. Alright? Thanks. Thank you, Lake County Transportation, and, uh, Waukegan and North Chicago Commissioners. Alright, next, it is, and I say this all the time, often, when our young men and young ladies get in trouble, they become the front page of the Newsome, Tri-Pian, Channel 7, 12, etc. However, when they are doing things that they're being asked to do, to be productive citizens in our society, sometimes, we don't give them the same accolades, uh, or same publicity as they do when they're doing something negative. Today, we're going to ask, invite up all of the attendees from Waukegan to college, and Laura Reels, who is now going to present academic excellence and leadership awards to the students. Laura?
Who's Laura? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, my name is Laura Reels.
Uh, my name is Laura Rios. And as these students line up, I just want to say that we're very honored to be here. These students have worked hard to get to where they're at. And so to get this recognition for their community leadership and academic excellence is truly an honor for them. And um, for those of you who don't know Waukegan to College, we're a college access program founded in 2009. We started with twenty-five students and today we're serving nearly two hundred. We have fifty college graduates, another forty in high, in college. And these are the, this is the graduating senior class of 2020. And they, they actually began their college preparation, some in middle school, but the hard work began in February with ACT prep. They spent all of spring break at various workshops, college visits, and just getting ready for this process. They have spent the summer at camps. They are still, some of them are still doing ACT prep. They all have their college lists. They have already started working on their college applications. They're nearly completed with that. And by the end of October, they will all have already in their hand one college acceptance. So, yeah, and it's, it's tremendous, um, hard work. And I'd like for our student spokesperson, Valeria Mensia, to share a little bit about her journey.
Hello, my name is Valeria Mensia. I have been a Waukegan resident for the last eight years. I immigrated with my family when I was eight years old due to the obstacles, the dangers setting where we're living and brought along. My parents decided that this opportunity would bring educational, better education for all of us. When we first arrived here, I was not fluent in the language, which was an obstacle for me and also because my parents didn't speak the language. That did not help my education. At this time, I had attended about eight different schools. And I felt a little directionless in my academics and lacked a sense of belonging in a school community. Luckily, on a Sunday afternoon, a Waukegan College representative, Laura Rios here, presented the program to my family, and my family really pushed my sister and I to join the program, which we chose it was the best idea. Waukegan College is a scholars program, starting in the fifth grade until graduating college. We were exposed to tutoring, mentoring, field trips, summer camps, and other activities. I say these are once-in-a-lifetime experiences, not only because we do not get to pay a dime, but also because we are, we are giving volunteers every single week for the whole school year that helps students in every subject, with every subject they are struggling. The only requirements we are to complete are giving back to the community with community service and also achieving academic success. All of these opportunities have been very helpful for all of us. Not only to me, but to all of my peers here and the other students in Waukegan College. I am very grateful because my mentors, my tutors actually became my mentors. John and Elizabeth McDonald, they're actually in the crowd back there. Eight years, um, by the end of September, we would all have applied to six different colleges and universities, which we do, will obviously get accepted to. Eight years later. Eight years later, I have been a part of Waukegan College for the past five years. And I am now on my way to graduate from high school and extend my education. And all thanks to Waukegan College. So thank you for having us this evening and recognizing all of their and our hard work.
When you hear your name, please come up and receive your certificate and be recognized by Mayor Cunningham. Melanie Antonio. You're right there. And you, and then you can just go back to where you're standing. Rafael Bonilla. Naya Brown. Melissa Bueno. Armani Collins. Christian Diaz Santos. Alejandro Garcia. Marlene Gonzalez. Sayar Husayini. Donville James. Lisbeth Hakes Mena. Michelle Martinez. Our student spokesperson, Valeria Mensia. Gabriel Murray. Natalia Ocampo. Pedro Ocampo. Not related. Noemi Padilla. Alex Palamar. Aleah Plummer. Lori Ruiz. And Caitlin Torres. So these students represent Cristo Rey St. Martin De Porres High School and also Waukegan High School. And again, we're very proud of your academic achievements and your community achievements. So, can we get a picture with you?
Yeah, all right.
Right. I think, I think we have to bunch up.
Got to bunch up. Small ones to the front and all that, whatever. George, George to the front. All right, big man, you go back. Come on, come on. While they're doing that everybody, we forgot the parents. Parents, all the parents there.
All right, parents come on up. Like if they want to get a picture of their kids.
All right, let's go, get a picture of the kids, here we go.
First, the kids.
Jay is first, let Jay get hers first.
All right, first, first, the kids.
Here goes Jay, listen. Jay, oh, parents.
Okay, we're all looking right here, and then you can look at all your parents and your friends. One more? Thank you.
There you go. All right, here we go, tape. All right, we good? All right, congratulations, congratulations.
Everyone, I know you see on your agenda is audience time, but before they do that, we have, we're going to move something up. That emotion by Alden Miss Rivera, second by Alden Min Turner to move up items three A, motion to present resolution nineteen dash R dash eighty-three honoring the lives and work of the Donovan's. Any questions to the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Resolution nineteen R eighty-three, honoring the lives and work of the Donovan's. Whereas Julie and Jim Donovan, having been building community in Waukegan for over thirty years through Habitat for Humanity, Waukegan Main Street, the Waukegan Public Library Board, and even organizing a Celebrate Unity Day in nineteen eighty-seven as an alternate march to draw people away from the KK march and gurnee. And whereas Julie and Jim Donovan were instrumental in establishing Habitat for Humanity Lake County in nineteen eighty-nine while raising two small children. And whereas Julie Donovan became Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity, serving in that capacity for thirty years, creating a hundred and sixty new homes, thirty-six rehab homes, twenty-eight repaired homes, and serving two hundred and twenty-four families, leading the organization to be the highest producing affiliate in Illinois with a budget of over two point four million. And whereas Jim Donovan served as Habitat for Humanity Midwest Field Training Director, creating the field training network and curriculum for the region including recruiting, training, and managing a network of twenty trainers to serve local affiliates. And whereas Julie Donovan served on Board of Directors of Chicagoland Habitat for Humanity and on the Habitat International Task Forces to assist other affiliates throughout the United States, as well as on the Community Coalition of Youth Build Lake County, the Lake County Preservation Initiative, and chaired the Waukegan Community Council. And whereas Jim Donovan was a professor at Shimer College in Waukegan and continuing to teach as it became the Great Books School at North Central College and was a research scientist at Abbott Laboratories and is an inventor with seven, several patents. Whereas Julie Donovan continued to expand Habitat for Humanity partnerships to include local, international businesses such as Abb V and Baxter, as well as schools such as Glenbrook South High School, which now has a geometry and construction class that combines geometry and construction and programs to include veteran home repair, neighborhood revitalization, building on faith, women build, and the inclusion of solar panels on select homes. And whereas Julie and Jim Donovan, through their work and daily living, have truly lived the Habitat for Humanity motto of building homes, building community, and building hope. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Cunningham and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby honor the lives and work of Julie and Jim Donovan for their dedication to making a difference every day and for a lifelong service to Waukegan. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to Julie and Jim Donovan at the Waukegan City Council meeting on the nineteenth day of August, twenty nineteen.
All right Julie and Jim, come on down. I know I saw you in here.
On behalf of Mayor's office, all the citizens of the city of Waukegan, we present this resolution to you in a strong appreciation what you've done to make our community the best community in Illinois.
Thank you very much Mayor, and Mayor, all the members of the City Council. I really appreciate this very big honor tonight, Jim and I, both of us. We moved here thirty-three years ago, and Jim, Jim had a job at Abbott. And we didn't know where to live in Lake County. And as we drove around looking for houses, we found Waukegan. And we said, this is home. Right away, we knew it was home. And so we moved in, we live on Keith Avenue. We have a beautiful house for sale, should anyone be looking for it. Um, just a little ad. But very early on, when we got here, we had the opportunity to look at affordable housing and the needs for overnight shelter and the needs for permanent affordable housing. And with a lot of fabulous people from this community, we were able to start Habitat for Humanity. We loved that it was a faith organization. It was an organization that helped people with a hand up, not a handout. And it solved their housing situation for years and years to come because they would live in their house, which they would own. People who never, ever thought they could own a house now became homeowners. And in Waukegan, we have a hundred and thirty-one homeowners because of the work of the community. And I thank the city, the council, and everyone in this city, all the departments that we have worked with over the years. I love working in Waukegan the best. We built North Chicago and in Zion and Winter Harbor and Round Lake Beach. But I always love it when we find a piece of land here in Waukegan and we can work right close to home where I live and play. And I thank the city, but I thank the county board. Lots of money came through the county, Angelo and, and um, Mary, you really were helpful. I thank all the departments in Waukegan, our city, our state, and our county. It's because we work together, our faith community, our volunteers. So I appreciate that. We're going to move, as I said, we're, houses on the market. We're going to Ohio because our kids live there. So we're not leaving Waukegan because we don't love Waukegan. I love Waukegan, I love our lake. I'm going to miss our lake a lot, and all of you. But it's been a fabulous journey here, and I'm glad to have called it home. Um, Jim is here with me, did you want to say it quicker?
I just wanted to make a brief switch from the past to the future. You've honored us for thirty years of work and building. We thank you for that. And as Julie stressed, yeah, we worked, but the whole community is what did the building for the past thirty years. Turning to the future, there's another big building project that Waukegan has been chipping away at. And so I wanted to give you a reminder, a regret, and a promise. The reminder, there is a lakefront waiting to be developed to fulfill the possibilities Waukegan can be. We all have to put that together. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm not just talking about the people behind the, the desk here. It's something for the community, just as building Habitat houses was. That's the reminder. The regret, we won't be here to help you do it. And the promise is when it does get done, we are coming back for the party.
Yeah, we never give up. I just invite three more people to come forward. Our Board President Greg Thompson, Board Member Gerald Jones, and Debbie Murphy. Our Board President Greg Thompson, Board Member Jaleel Jones, and Debbie Murphy. Greg Thompson was our Board President for many years. He went off the Board for a while, and he's back. And I'm thrilled that he is. He's a Waukegan resident. He's working with some of the commissions here in Waukegan right now. Jaleel Jones is a Board Member for the past few years. We appreciate his support. And I would like to introduce you to the new Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity. This is Debbie Murphy. We've been overlapping for a little bit, and the end of this month, I'm leaving. And my heart will always be here. But I am so excited. Debbie worked with us when we put in our subdivision. She was our banker, and she has a long history with Waukegan, and she's gonna take us to new heights. And let me just let her say a quick word, because she's gonna make it happen with all of you.
Thank you, Julie, Jim. Thank you so much for the legacy that you are leaving for Waukegan. And we are so excited, because we're gonna continue to grow this legacy and build more houses.
That's right.
Thank you.
Julie. Thank you. It's been real. Jim.
Do I get a hug?
Yeah, you get a hug too, Jim. Thank you. Alright. How far is that from Dayton, Ohio?
An hour.
Alright.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Real quick, I would add a few of the Habitat for Humanity openings I would see that Julie was part of. And to see the joy of a family being able to get a roof over their head, there's nothing like it. There's nothing like it. And I'm sure that touched her heart, or all the hard work she did. But it really touched me. I only went to a couple of them, but to see a family get a house and get a roof over their head, it's just amazing. So thank you very much, Julie.
Yeah. Absolutely right. Now, normally, we go into audience time, but we have with us today four young ladies who are the new pageants from Miss Waukegan Teen, Junior, and Little, who are here with us today. They've been the work already. Everywhere I go, they go. I don't know who running for what. But let's just bring them up and show them who represents our community. Young ladies, come on up. Say your name. Do we start from the little to the... Alright, here you go. You say your name.
Hi, I'm Sydney Jones. Hi, I'm Sydney Jones.
Alright, Sydney. Wow.
Oh, you're tired? Come on this way, Sydney.
Come on, come on. Come on, everybody. The camera don't have to face you. We gonna go to the camera. And you are Little?
I'm Little Miss Waukegan, 2019.
Wow.
Hello, I'm Natalia Alvarez, and I'm your Junior Miss Waukegan, 2019.
Hello, my name is Allison Mallory, and I'm your Teen Miss Waukegan, 2019.
Alright, congratulations. Well, thank you. Being mama already. Take care. That's right, take care.
Hi, I'm Kenesha Strickland, Miss Waukegan, 2019.
Alright, congratulations, ladies. Well, thank you, ladies. And again, when our young men and young ladies are doing the things we want them to do to be successful in our society, we must celebrate them and push them to their greatness. Congratulations, ladies. And I look forward to seeing you around town. Jamie, gotta do a picture. Gotta do a picture. Well, they the queens, they gotta do the picture. Alright, come on over. Come on over. Alright, parents, come on, parents. And grandparents, come on. I know you want... Yeah, you...
Alright. Alright, here we go. Alright, parents, come on. Let's go. Parents. Come on. Come on my side. There you go. Give it up. Right there. There you go. Oh, that's how we do. Alright, thank you.
Alright, everybody, the queens stole the show. Alright. Alright, now, here we go. We're ready. We're back to our agenda now, everybody. We're going back to item two, which is audience time. Alright, Madam Clerk.
Alright, Ken Andress, and there's a three-minute limit.
Mayor Alderman, as we're representing Naval Station back again. But the reason why I'm coming is something that Waukegan audiences or government has been participating in is the Northern Lake Shore Connectivity Plan. And this is the plan in which Zion, Winter Harbor, Beach Park, and North Chicago are participating in doing a bike path, walk paths along our Great Lakes shore here. And Waukegan will be hosting the first meeting on September nineteenth at the Jack Benny Center of the Arts, and wish to encourage the members of residents of Waukegan to participate and come out to that meeting at all possible, and give their opinions of how this path of connection between our communities can be impacted. And being from Great Lakes, we have a lot of sailors that like to bicycle. I went to the first meeting a few weeks ago in Beach Park, and it was amazing how many South Chicago people bike up to Kenosha. And a lot of times, they drive, ride through our communities, not realizing the beauty and points of interest that they could visit along the way. So we're trying to emphasize where can we invite those bikers and other enthusiasts of ground transportation to participate in. One added item, it was very interesting to be at this meeting particularly, because Habitat for Humanity, I participated on five of their homes. One in Zion, one in North Chicago, and three in Waukegan. It was fabulous, digging those trenches for the footers, or ripping off the concrete forms, or painting a room, or cutting in the electrical boxes. It was great to be at some of the, one of the homes in North Chicago where they opened it up to the family at the end. The pride of working on a home with them, and they put a lot of sweat equity, sweat equity into those homes themselves, so it's nothing. The other aspect was Waukegan to college. And I know I participated in the first event that started that off a number of years ago. So it's nice to hear the results of those efforts that I was able to participate in, and hopefully many will in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne McDonald.
And as she's coming, I just want to let you know, sir, that we are participating in a CMAP grant for that as well. I'm just being informed. We are participating in a CMAP, CMAP grant for that. So we're part of it right now. But thank you for letting us about the time. Appreciate it. Sorry, Suzanne.
Nope, thank you for having me.
Suzanne, do me a favor. We can get right down and see you talk.
Sure thing. Thank you very much. I am here to speak out against the proposed casino. The economic evidence, I feel, indicates that the social and economic costs of gambling are three dollars, go to the taxpayer for every one dollar that benefits the taxpayer. So it costs the taxpayer three to benefit one. So who does benefit? I would ask everyone to visit the State Board of Election website, and according to compiled data on that particular website, you will see that in 2019, March, April, more than 300,000 was put into this Aldermanic campaign from the gaming industry, the Waukegan Voter Alliance, and the Video Gaming United PAC. First Ward Alderman Sylvia Bolton got $16,000. Second Ward Alderman Patrick Steger got $29,000. Fourth Ward Alderman Rudell Kirkwood, $20,000. Sixth Ward Alderman Keith Turner, $26,000, as well as 39 to support candidate John Patterson in the Seventh Ward, and 117 to support candidate Darden in the Ninth. She really had to be a great candidate, and she lost, by the way. I'd also mention, in April 2017, the mayoral election was received 50,000 from the Video Gaming United PAC chaired by Michael Bond to the Waukegan Democratic Organization, which then donated 55,000 to candidate Sam Cunningham. There have been a number of repeated associations of the Tap Room Gaming with our elected officials and a city employee, to believe that an unbiased decision really could be made on any issue involving Tap Room Gaming. These donations, contributions, make me question the ethics of accepting them in light of the decisions to be made, and the ability of the community to trust that the city council is going to do the right thing for the city of Waukegan. Thank you. Thank you. During the Planning and Zoning Committee, Medline stated that Phase One of their ventilation and emissions capture upgrades were completed. Yet, their emissions are still far above state legislative regulated standards, and much higher than the EPA actionable standards. But our facilities emitting cancer and mutations remain operational. Sterogenics in Willowbrook was sealed. Their median income was, in 2016, was nearly 70,000, their population above 65% white. Sterogenics in Georgia, also emitting ETO, has received incredible movement. Their median income is about 66,000 and 43.9% white. I say this because some individuals from the Stop ETO organization, gurney, have said that our community just doesn't show up. Do we not want it enough? Do we not do the right things to get a proper response to our health crisis? Do we, the working-class communities of color, not deserve to be heard because we don't fight hard enough? No, gurney. Your rhetoric is wrong. Part of living in an environmental justice community means that the system has been created for us to fail. We deal with cumulative impacts. Toxic polluters emit into the air we breathe to make toxic products that are put on our 99-cent store shelves. The little kids' makeup kits bought at the 99-cent stores have led, and nobody does anything about it. HUD housing is made with subpar materials that off-gas toxins into homes for decades, and the food that is sold in stores is laced with pesticides. We breathe toxins inside, outside, and put them on our bodies, give them to our children, and put them in our bellies. That is cumulative effects. That is what we deal with in this community. That is how the system has been designed. We are not at fault for being redlined into a community and exploited for the profit of the wealthy. I know the council is not voting on the variants today, but I want you to keep this in mind when deliberating. The change must come from the bottom up. The narrative that our children don't deserve a healthy future because we are not willing to fight is trash. All children deserve a health future, a healthy present, and a healthy past. The council can affect two out of those three. Give our children the right and change the narrative of health being a privilege by denying the variants. A toddler stack will not dilute the toxic molecules emitted. That is wrong. Every single one of the molecules will still reach the community at original strength. It will diffuse the molecules, so the area which is exposed to the molecules increases. Let us have a chance at addressing one of the health impacts by allowing for a future, a true air capture during the next air monitoring period, and not a skewed one. Thank you. Dylan Burdette.
Hey, y'all. I brought some handouts for you. While that's being passed around, I just wanted to remind everyone here that there's a cap reopening for renew, renewal and increase of the acid rain production permit coming out of NRG's coal flower plant here in Waukegan. The comment period is now open from today until November 2nd. If you have questions on how to put those comments in, if you have thoughts about whether or not we should be exposed to more acid rain here in Waukegan, you can either comment those directly to the EPA, or you can get in touch with Clean Power Lake County, and we'll instruct you on how to do that. Thank you. Okay, so now, does everybody have that? Okay. So what you're looking at here is on the first page where you have a bar graph just in blue, these are the average ambient concentrations of ethylene oxide during Phase One of air monitoring. I'd like to point out in the little bar graph, location M3 and location M5, those are the two locations that are closest to Medline. As you can see, we have a very clear idea of where the ethylene oxide in our air is coming from. Also, look at sites V3 and V4. Those are the ones that are closest to Vantage. We know exactly where the ethylene oxide in our air is coming from. It's not, as Medline says, these are coming from natural, organic sources in our community. These are coming from these plants. If you care to flip that over, we are looking at the pre and post upgrade averages for the Phase One. These upgrades were actually finished on June 10th. All of these, the state-of-the-art upgrades, the best in the country, unprecedented, as we were told, that our community was going to get before anybody else. As you can see here, at location M1, at the border of Park City and the Greenbelt Preserve, the levels of ethylene oxide actually go up after these upgrades were put in place. At location M3, closest to Medline, they do go down. They go down from 326 levels, times higher than the EPA's actionable level, down to a 126 times higher. So if you're keeping count, 126 times higher than the actionable level is still higher than the actionable level. So I would encourage you to take a look at this. Feel free to take it home. As you guys, as everybody here should know, we're gonna be voting on whether or not Medline is gonna get a stacked variance at the next city council meeting. So if you have thoughts about this, or you'd like to get a copy of these charts, come and talk to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Nelson Patterson.
I'm here tonight to speak to the high ethical standards citizens of Waukegan should expect from the city council. I'm calling upon the Corporation Council to enact and publicize ethical standards for conflict of interest relative to video gaming and casino issues immediately, so that there is no further loss of public confidence in this council or city government. Currently, the ethical bar this council sets for itself on video gaming and casino issues seems to be incredibly low. And I know I speak for many in saying that there will be a heavy price for this city, for members of this city council, and for the proposed casino if higher, more transparent ethical standards are not implemented. Given the publicly documented influence that Tap Room Gaming has with most of the Aldermen before me, it is very hard not to be cynical that there is not a quid pro quo, or worse, and that the city of Waukegan is being punked, played, carefully but deliberately manipulated in a ploy to reap millions of dollars in profits from a rigged system. The process needs to be constructed and run in a manner to promote and preserve public trust and confidence in the integrity and the conduct of gaming. Those are the exact words in the Illinois Gaming Act just signed by Governor Pritzker. We should expect nothing less. So where are the conflicts? Let's look to the ProPublica account of insider politicking and campaign support that bought and paid for many on the city council to rubber stamp video gaming and casino expansion. Tap Room Gaming and its PAC spent over $300,000 to elect most of you, and failed to elect two. A very member of this council himself received over $55,000 from the Waukegan Democratic Organization.
I'm here tonight to speak to the high ethical standards citizens of Waukegan should expect from the city council. I'm calling upon the Corporation Council to enact and publicize ethical standards for conflict of interest relative to video gaming and casino issues immediately, so that there is no further loss of public confidence in this council or city government. Currently, the ethical bar this council sets for itself on video gaming and casino issues seems to be incredibly low. And I know I speak for many in saying that there will be a heavy price for this city, for members of this city council, and for the proposed casino if higher, more transparent ethical standards are not implemented. Given the publicly documented influence that Tap Room Gaming has with most of the aldermen before me, it is very hard not to be cynical that there is not a quid pro quo, or worse, and that the city of Waukegan is being punked, played, carefully but deliberately manipulated in a ploy to reap millions of dollars in profits from a rigged system. The process needs to be constructed and run in a manner to promote and preserve public trust and confidence in the integrity and the conduct of gaming. Those are the exact words in the Illinois Gaming Act just signed by Governor Pritzker. We should expect nothing less. So where are the conflicts? Let's look to the ProPublica account of insider politicking and campaign support that bought and paid for many on the city council to rubber stamp video gaming and casino expansion. Tap Room Gaming and its PAC spent over $300,000 to elect most of you and failed to elect two. A very member of this council himself received over $55,000 from the Waukegan Democratic Organization, just days after the video gaming PAC donated $50,000 to the Waukegan Democratic Organization. Was that a coincidence? Or was it a shady deal? I wonder if the video gaming check had even cleared. Now, when a former Tap Room Gaming employee was hired by the city and proposed as a member of the Casino Proposal Review Committee, how did that look? It's like asking the fox to set the standards for the hen house security. When a fellow alderman failed to disclose his role as an elected official on his gaming license application, not once, not twice, but allegedly three times, what should the citizens of Waukegan that elected you think? When a fellow alderman fails to disclose his interest as the 100% owner and gaming manager of a local Asian restaurant which contracts with Tap Room Gaming, what should the citizens of Waukegan think? Is his deal with Tap Room Gaming the same deal offered to other similar enterprises?
Thank you. Thank you. Karen Fink.
I'm Karen Fink, citizen of Waukegan, and I feel just what was talked about before me. We don't need a casino. We need people who take care and are concerned about our citizens. Please vote against a casino.
Jenny Maroney.
In recent weeks, I've been dismayed to hear about several longtime Waukegan families who've decided to leave our city. I say "leave our city" because they apparently have no destination in mind. They're just not moving to another state or to a village west of here. They're just getting out. Not you, Julie, and Jim. Why? The answer seems to be the same. Waukegan no longer upholds the values that they hold dear. How do they come to this conclusion? I have a pretty good idea. Let me read a portion of an email I sent to many of my friends and neighbors next week, last week. "In April, the gaming industry got away with literally buying four seats on our city council. It could have been worse. They failed in the other two wards. The amount of money they invested is obscene, and their objective is to advance the proliferation of gaming in all forms in our city. As you know, the state has approved putting another casino in Waukegan. What you may not know, if you're watching on YouTube later in the week, the casino is not a done deal. Whether you are a fan of casino gambling or not, that is not the issue facing us. The issue is that we have been the recipients of wrong information, inaccurate statistics, inflated revenue projections, and blatant lies about the effect a casino would have on our community. Some of our elected officials would have us believe that Waukegan would reap extraordinary financial benefits from a casino. Not so. Do your homework. The Facebook page, All for Waukegan, contains links to information that will open your eyes to what is behind the gambling without limits that is overtaking our city. I love my city. I am unwilling to let outside interests infiltrate this community with their promises of economic development and revenue that we desperately need. Believe me, we are not that desperate. We deserve leaders who are able to think for themselves and on behalf of all of us, figure out how to bring smart, sustainable, suitable development to Waukegan. I beg all of you to stand up and join the growing number of Waukeganites who are fed up with the direction in which our leaders are heading, and I make no apology for my passion for my city and against the expansion of gambling."
Ellen Montgomery.
We have quite a few people coming up, so I'm going to call the next two names so you're right behind it, Ellen. And that's Mark Kayet and Pastor Gas, so that then we're ready to go. So go ahead. Stand right behind this Ellen. Mark Kayet and off the gas. Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. Ellen Montgomery, 2718 Audrey Avenue. Mr. Mayor, Alderman. I think those ads that show happy people having so much fun in a casino are amazing. We've all seen them, had them mailed to our homes, seen them on our televisions. Everyone is so happy. However, if you've ever been in a casino, it looks very different. People are serious, and many are desperate. Losing money is serious business. Gambling and gaming is the expert industry on false hope. How else could they get people to game, knowing that only the house wins? And folks, the city of Waukegan is not the house. Mayor, I know you've been pro-casino for many years. I also know that in your insurance business, you take repeated looks over time to determine if anything has changed and if anything is now a risk aversion. I also know that it takes a really strong person to change their mind on a controversial issue. You must look at the actual data at the casinos on Illinois Gaming Board site. All the facts are there, and none of the false hope. It is an economic reality that there is an ebb and flow, an up and down of business. According to the data, the casinos' industry time has passed. Only six of the 10 existing casinos ever made $10 million for the communities. Currently, seven of the 10 are at half or less of their highest income. We cannot afford a casino here or its economic cannibalization. That $10 million promise to you for Waukegan is absolute fiction, total false hope generated by the false hope experts. Building a casino is not going to create more gamblers. Anyone who wants to gamble is already. Where has the casino revenue gone? Up to now, casinos could have 1,200 gaming positions. Waukegan currently has 86, 86 locations with five or more gaming positions, or nearly half a casino already in place here. The $22 million that left Waukegan last year due to video gaming would have gone a long way if spent here in Waukegan businesses. The state of Illinois has bet on the gaming industry all the way into a financial crisis. Folks, the state of Illinois is not the house either. Learn from this crisis. Now is the time for due diligence, for you to be serious about this. The research must be done. The data must be analyzed. Don't buy into this industry's expertise of false hope. Make the responsible choice for no casino. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Kayet.
Hi, my name is Mark Kayet. You might know me from Austin's and Libertyville. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the St. Louis Board for giving me the time here this evening. I recently was approached by the North Point Casino Group, and I was very honored to have been requested to be a part of that project. I also spent some time talking with them, and it came clear to me that they were very, very in line with the community and were bringing the community along with them. I personally am not working in the community. Waukegan itself, I have. I've done a lot of fundraising for the police and fire department. I've done one of the biggest motorcycle events in the Midwest here in Waukegan. But when I learned also, people like Quantz at Big Ads and other people who are going to be participating in this event, I thought it was a great thing, and it was a natural choice for a casino to do, bring the community along with them. My impression of the whole project seemed to be uplifting, and absolutely, I thought it had to be a great group to be picked to continue to move forward to Springfield with us. Preferably not make it through Springfield, and that you push North Point through as Waukegan solo. So I'm here to request that, if you have that power to do so at this time, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kayet.
I'm Arthur Gas, 1403 Reed Road in Zion. I'm pastor of the Mount Zion Baptist Church in Waukegan, and also president and CEO of the Black Chamber of Commerce of Lake County. As a minister of the gospel, I have an ideological opposition to gambling. However, we do know that a casino will be coming to Waukegan, a reality that the community must accept. As president of the chamber, my focus must shift now to ensure inclusion of the diversity of Waukegan. We must not throw out the baby with the bathwater. It is my responsibility to make sure that this project distributes its numerous benefits throughout this diverse community, as we must embrace those benefits. The question is, who should build this world-class entertainment destination? As president of the chamber, I have always advocated for local and minority inclusion in all of our employment hiring. As a result of the chamber's workforce training expertise, I have been asked by the North Point Casino to assist in their local workforce training program for their casino. The chamber is strongly recommending the selection of the owner developer who has engaged Waukegan with a serious effort to ensure that all local and minority hiring goals are met. North Point has committed to not seek waivers to sidestep the city of Waukegan's local hiring goals. The fact is, they are the owner developer with intimate knowledge of the local community and have demonstrated and tailored their development for Waukegan's unique needs and challenges. They have a plan to bring all communities together to build a world-class entertainment destination and staff it with a workforce that reflects the demographics of Waukegan. Mayor Cunningham and council members, the state of Illinois has given you an awesome opportunity of responsibility and the power to choose the best developer for Waukegan. And in fact, I personally believe, you know, it's your elected responsibility to choose what is best for Waukegan and not to be influenced by others to do otherwise. I strongly urge you to select North Point as the owner developer to submit the Illinois Gaming, to Illinois Gaming Board for final approval and not leave our faith in Springfield's hands. What's best for Waukegan is North Point Casino, which has assured the community that they are fully committed to hiring a workforce as diverse as our community, from due diligence, construction, vendors, full and part-time position of employment. Let's all be clear. We know North Point Casino. They are ready and licensed. They have all extensive history of charitable giving in Waukegan and Lake County. I believe Waukegan residents prefer you, mayor, and council to choose a local developer to build this casino, and I ask that you choose North Point. The time is very important. We cannot afford to leave this decision to Springfield. Waukegan would not be a priority to the Gaming Board. The Gaming Board will review multiple applications, and seemingly it takes forever just to review one. So I ask you respectfully to pick the best plan for Waukegan, and the decision is yours. You must choose the locally focused proposal, and that is North Point Casino and Mr. Michael Bond. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Gas. Chris Keener, Stacy Bullard, Robert Fink, and Fernando Benena. If you want, just go ahead and line up. That'll be fine. Stacy Bullard?
The clock won't start till I get some...
No, I'm sorry, I'm starting to get there.
My name is Stacy Bullard. I tell ya...
I'm starting to get there. Stacy Bullard, Robert Fink, Fernando.
I'm trying to get some time. My name is Stacy Bullard. I'm the president of Integrity Developers. I'm also the president of the Minority Contractor Association. Back in 2006, you know, I actually left my job. You know, I worked for Walgreens. For 10 years, I built their stores. And I've had the authority to oversee the construction of Walgreens. I went, and that was my task. And what I noticed was, anytime I went to a site, and I've had all the south, even Puerto Rico, I never saw a minority with a blueprint under his arm. He's always been the one with the broom in his hand. So one of the things I did back in the recession, the worst time of the year, back in 2008, I left Walgreens, went on my own, and I said, "I'm gonna make a difference." And one of the things that I did, I started out with the NAACP. I chaired the board for construction and housing. And then I started the very first Minority Contractor Association. My first year on my own, I made $18,000. The best money I've made in my life. I made it on my own. So I, and that's one of the things that we teach minorities, is to do a good job. Since I've been on my own, I have built the Waukegan Public Library, the Early Learning Center. We had 60% minority participation where I headed that operation. Also, we did the Waukegan Public School, which is Glen Flora and the rest of them. We had over 30% minority participation. One of the things that we have this opportunity, only, let me go back a little bit. Right now, I have actually been involved with Great Lakes, doing a lot of, I did all the fiber for the base. I'm working right now on Marion Jones. And we have done courtrooms after courtrooms. And one of the things that I, you know, have an experience, I got a call from Michael Bond, and he talked about how can we get minority participation on the job. I appreciate that, being a person that I believe in that. I told him, "I'm about that life." And one of the things that I told him is that, you know, he had guaranteed no waivers. He said, "No waivers." He said, "Matter of fact, we're gonna put you part of the construction," which I have a commitment, you know, letter for, "and also, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have the ability to make sure that we get minorities on that project." You know, as I look at, as I look at the board up here, the council, I see diversity. I see a lot of different ethnicity. That's a wonderful thing to see. And I'm a firm believer that because this is what Waukegan represents, we should see that on our sites. And it'd be a shame if we let some other developers come in here from somewhere else, build our casino, make money, and take it back to other communities. What Michael Bond and the North Point have done, they have worked together to put together a team, and they are letting us be a part of it. I'm excited, and what this is gonna do for my company is gonna take us to another level, that now we can compete against bigger people. And it's gonna do the same thing for other minority contractors.
Thank you, Mr. Bullard. Robert Strain.
I'm Bob Fink. I'm not in favor of casino gambling. I think that it's not a done deal until you aldermen cast your vote. And I know that not all of you have been in favor of gambling. I'm 82 years old, and I have been waiting for a long time for positive financial reports to come from gaming. I don't think it's going to help you. I pay my taxes every year. That's what you have to use to help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Fernando Bajina.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Fernando Bajina. I'm the owner of La Canoa, El Petual, and Rainbow Cleaning Systems. We have been doing local business in Waukegan since 1996. Between all our businesses, we employ over 300-plus employees. We're proud to be able to provide local employment and help bring food to the tables for many local families. I'm proud to share that La Canoa is one of those partners that was chosen as a local business by North Point Casino. When I was approached by George Lipton, and he mentioned that he traveled all the way down from Vegas representing North Point Casino, I got excited. When he shared that he was looking for local successful business, and they chose La Canoa as a Mexican restaurant, part of this exciting project. Being a family-owned business and for our employees, this is a great opportunity to expand our business in another level. I expect to experience huge growth because of this opportunity, which will allow me to reinvest in my business and hire more local employees. Ladies and gentlemen, please make sure to have a good operator. Make sure they have the proper licenses. Make sure they have the money. Make sure they choose to work with local businesses. That's the most important thing. The most important thing we want is a first shot to be successful as a business, a local business, and not to just bring a non-casino name who will not think of the local community and only think of their own interests. Because until today, no one has approached through any local business to be part of the project. Board members, this is not political or personal. This is a great opportunity for economical and community growth for our city and local businesses. Waukegan residents trust you to put our community first when considering the proposal before the city. I am confident that North Point Casino will offer the best approach to build Waukegan for the future. This business's opportunity is a dream for any small local businesses to be part of. I want to thank North Point Casino, and thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Bajina. The next three people will be Carol Rush, Calvin Mathis, and Canada Sfoa. So go ahead and line up. Charles Rush, you're first. Calvin Mathis, and then Canada Sfoa.
My name is Charles Rush. I live on Sheridan Road. The video gaming expansion in Waukegan has been pushed by Bill Warner of Warner Gaming and Michael Bond of Tap Room Gaming. Both are non-residents of Waukegan. Profits... Profits from their operation, for the most part, are removed and banked elsewhere. Some money, however, has been invested in helping to advance their project. This comes in the support of candidates for the positions open on city called, city council, alderman and mayor. I would hope that those on this council that have received the support from gaming not become their lapdogs, that willingly bob their heads to the affirmative as their benefactors wish. And often it is thought of that political officers have been viewed as a certain subculture of bottom-feeding, self-serving invertebrates, incapable of independent thought. I would hope that this body can ride, rise above that, rise above that, and vote against any further advance of video gaming.
Thank you. Calvin Mathis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Calvin Mathis, I live on Leith Avenue. I just wanted to come up here and offer a little support to the leadership. I love a good democratic debate. There's nothing like the First Amendment, which is my favorite amendment, and a part of it I wanted to make mention of, and it says that Congress shall make no laws respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. And I know as a city council, we're not Congress, but we have certainly established a certain religion here. And I would just hope that religion and politics are separate. Now, that being said, at, at the age of fourteen, I confess that Jesus Christ was the Son of God and was baptized, so I have no problem with the religion that you have established. But, as the Bible would say, where there is no vision, the people perish. And Mayor Cunningham, one thing I gotta say for you, you have vision. Now, not that I agree with your vision one way or the other, but you have a direction that you want to take the city. And in a democracy, we vote these elected officials up here, if you don't like them, you don't vote for them, but in a democracy, the majority wins. Sam, you won the election, this is the direction we're going. This is not only, this is not your vision, this vision goes way back. So it, it appears as if it's gonna happen. Mr. Bullard kinda stole my thunder, but he was right on point. When you go forward, let's make sure that we have a diverse local business people working on these job sites. I had another business owner here mention the same thing. So we wanna make sure that we, if we go forward with the gambling, we get all this money coming into the city, that is dispensed evenly. Now, I don't know if that's gonna happen, obviously nobody else does either, because you can't see into the future, that's what, into the future, that's what vision is. If you want to change the vision, you run for a political office. If you win, then you implement your vision. That's the way democracy works. And I appreciate it, that I have the ability and the right to stand up here and offer my opinion. So thank you to the city council, I wish you the, the best, and I hope the city prospers on your decision. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathis. Canada Sfoa.
Do me a favor, why don't you come on up behind that man, just come up front, just come on up front. There you go.
There you go, good man.
This is why I think we should not add a casino to Waukegan. First of all, there are lots of people who can just barely afford food. I don't want people losing money and not being able to afford food. Second of all, it is not a family activity. Some kids might not want to stay with a babysitter, some parents cannot even afford a babysitter. Third of all, we could add some stuff that families could actually do together. Here are some examples, a water park, a family diner, or a movie theater. The examples that I gave you would be good options for families with children. I think that we maybe should have different entertainment options other than a casino. Thank you.
Randy Carr, and Nan Dowden, and David Vialobos. Next three.
That's a tough act to follow. Prior to becoming a Waukegan resident in 2005, I was raised in metro Detroit. I'd like to share with you my experience about living in a community where casinos were the promise of a new future. Detroit needs little introduction, its reputation precedes it. In the late 1990s, Michigan approved the licensing of three casinos in downtown Detroit as a means to help revitalize the long economically depressed community. Promises of a return of profitable businesses and growth to the area provide, prove to be untrue. Instead, food deserts, poor public schools, and population decreases continued long after the arrival of these three casinos. They were not the economic boon that was supposed to save Detroit. In recent years, however, a new mirror and office, new policies in place, downtown Detroit is thriving in spite of its troubled past. Restaurants, businesses, and sporting events mean that people are out and about. Incentives that create businesses are in place as a proactive measure to rebuild the community, and long-term economic sustainability is now a real possibility. But let's be clear, whether this is Detroit, or Gary, or Joliet, a casino will not rebuild a city. Communities that attempt to rebuild based on gambling income fail to acknowledge the detriment that causes our most economically vulnerable populations to suffer. Countless studies and research indicate that casinos placed in low-income communities such as Waukegan will not see the economic rebound made by promises such as through groups like Tap Room Gaming. Instead, discretionary income that could be spent on, at small businesses, the true leaders in rebuilding our downtown are redirected to group whose main, groups whose main goal is to create profit and not community. As parents of young children, we rarely take our family out to eat in, in Waukegan. The sound of video machines, adults sitting behind ropes and staring at video screens are not the environment that we want our children to be a part of, and yet it infiltrates almost every single space in the city. In conclusion, I ask that all the persons restrict the sale of lands to potential casino developers. It saddens me to know that many of you have accepted money for your campaigns from these developers. It seriously calls into question the ability to be impartial in making decisions related to this casino. I encourage you to remember your responsibility to your constituents of your district and not to those who have funded your campaign. Waukegan needs our leaders to look towards sustainable, long-term goals instead of short-term promises of profit. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here in support of Stop ETO of Lake County. We are a community-led movement formed by the community for the community. Again, I'm a supporter, I'm not a core member. I wanted to give some just basic information on ETO. Medline is emitting dangerous amounts of ethylene oxide into the air. ETO causes cancer, breast cancer, lymphomas, leukemia, myeloma, and, and more. ETO causes many other health problems, including asthma, headaches, miscarriages, decreased fertility, birth defects, eye problems, and brain cell damage, neurotoxicity. ETO tox, toxic effects are stronger in children. There is no safe amount of ETO in our air. Medline is emitting up to five hundred times higher than the EPA's actionable levels. Vantage is emitting up to fifty-five times higher than the EPA's actionable levels. And Medline, right now, is requesting a special permit to increase the stack height to eighty-five feet, which will dilute ETO concentrations by dispersing it to a broader area, which is impacting the entire community. On Sunday, I took myself and my family to get our blood tested for ethylene oxide. We reside, we reside one mile from Medline, myself and my two sons and my husband, ages eleven and thirteen, for the past nine years. If people don't think or believe that this health crisis is real, I hope that they do now, or strongly consider getting themselves better informed. Increasing the stack height is only a tool Medline wants to use in order to decrease emission test results in the future. Vantage installed their scrubbers early on after they received their permit. Medline waited until June, the week that the testing began. Most educated people would surmise that they did this in efforts to curtail emissions completely as testing began. And now this, a request to increase stack height. Also, my knowledge, to my knowledge, Waukegan would be the first facility to approve a stack height increase, and in my strong opinion, I believe that would reflect a negative portrayal of our city. I don't want that, and I hope that you don't either. In closing, residents have such strong opinions about this casino and rally together. I wish they'd behave this way over ETO, cancer, and the health of our children.
Damn straight.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm David Vialobos, former alderman for the Fourth Ward. I have to say, I'm a bit disturbed and disgusted to hear the attempted manipulation of our community. We had a couple of public comments talking to the, to the benefit of North Point and Michael Bond. Let me just tell everyone really quick my experience with Michael Bond. At the end of November, his staff reached out to me to meet with me to talk about this proposal of a casino. They already had a plan laid out, some visuals, and they were trying to get a sense of which aldermen were pro-casino. I told him that I'd like to see community engagement in this process. I don't want just the nine aldermen, at that point I wasn't alderman, saying that we were gonna be the ones to vote on this and have no, no community input. And he challenged me and said that, well, you know, to be a proper leader, it's more than just voting on Monday nights. He said that there's this benefit for Waukegan, and I was like, "Show me community input. I don't want to tell you anything right now because me personally, I'm gonna know, but if you show me the community wants it, I would vote yes." And I still haven't seen any attempt on the city council's behalf to do this community engagement that I asked of. I asked for this last meeting, I emailed the council and the mayor, I got two aldermen that responded to me, saying, "Yes, we should be doing this." The mayor said, "Stand by." Still standing by. So please, do this. You're already proposing to put forty-five thousand dollars further of Waukegan's money towards this process, 'cause your vote on this is on section, on item S, for the Johnson Consulting Company to review the six applications. All right? Before we go deeper down this rabbit hole, please get the community input, do this community engagement that I asked of, and I'm sure other residents would like to see. You already see that we're coming here to begin with, we're all residents that are saying we don't want this. Please don't be afraid to hear the truth of the whole community, all right? So, back to Michael Bond really quick. The people that are up here, it's clear to me that he's been speaking with them to try to manipulate further what he's done in our community, right? Going to developers, small business owners, the chambers of commerce, to leverage further his grasp on our community. All right? I think you should honestly withdraw his application for trying to do what he's doing, making, try to make these backroom deals with aldermen. Again, back in November, he met with me, had a follow-up meeting, trying to see where I stood on it. Again, I want a public input, I still do. So, I think it's really, again, disgusting and disturbing what this gentleman's trying to do to our community. I don't appreciate it. And so, I took his words to me as, leadership is more than just voting on Mondays, it's a personal challenge to me, and that's what I'm gonna do. So, I'm here to announce, you guys probably won't see me for a while, I'm gonna start my graduate program in public administration down at UIC, and I'm focused on becoming, what it takes to become a, sorry, nerves. What it takes to be a city manager, all right? I'm gonna get credentialed to be a city manager, so I can bring some of that back to Waukegan to help improve our community too. That's what we need to be at. Thank you.
Lisa May, Tia Tanaka, and Ether Heredia. So Lisa May, Tia Tanaka, and Ether Heredia. Just go ahead and line up. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Since your last meeting, some interesting events have occurred related to the casino and gaming in Waukegan. We had an investigative report come out that was published, and one of your colleagues is under review by the Illinois Gaming Board. If you participate in social media, I'm sure your screens have been inundated with ads from a certain casino that would lead you to believe the deal is sealed with a particular bidder. That bidder was the subject of the published report. He's the principal behind Tap Room Gaming, owning more than fifty percent of all gaming positions in town, and he's also the top donor behind many up, up here. Some of the ads feature a very, a local, very well-respected pastor who spoke this night, giving his endorsement to this developer's project, with the promise of jobs for our community without any recognition to the inevitable financial damage and social costs that will come to our community. Strange days indeed, the silence from our community leaders is deafening. Instead, I hear fear that the casino's gonna go to Park City if Waukegan rejects it. If we don't get it, they will. I hear rumors, we'll have to lay off public safety personnel if we don't get a casino? I'm told, we might as well, we have nothing else. For years, we have been taken advantage of by corporate interests because of the almighty dollar and lack of creativity. And now we want a casino because it's better than nothing, and we don't want a neighboring community to reap the so-called benefits of being the host community? How desperate are we? I understand the need for jobs and revenue for our struggling city, but a casino is not a sustainable solution. There is strong evidence backed by data at the Rockefeller Institute in a 2016 report that shows while a casino may provide short-run increases in public revenue, these increases are getting smaller and the duration is shorter as more and more states compete for a limited pool of gaming dollars. I urge you to learn more about market saturation and industry cannibalization. When the excitement and novelty wears off, so will the revenue decline. Rhode Island, Delaware, and New Jersey are all using public dollars to prop up their casinos that are failing. Sure, there are good people here tonight that want us to build the casino, but in five years, ten years, who's gonna be left holding the bag? It's gonna be us, the citizens of Waukegan. I'm not even getting into the societal costs right now, but those, those costs are real, and our community will bear those as well. Did you know that penny slots are the largest revenue stream for Illinois casinos? Do you think that high rollers from the North Shore and from the Otter County are gonna sit at penny slot machines? No. It's our most resenable, excuse me, our most vulnerable residents feeding a dream or an addiction. The high rollers come and go, but the addicted come back every day, and the system is rigged to hook them. I'm proud to stand with the many residents that understand that gaming is a threat to the future of our city. The casino may be the focus of concern in the present moment...
Thank you. Thank you. Tia Tanaka.
Hi, my name is Tia Tanaka, I'm one of the core members of Stop ETO. I'm here because I know that the voting for the permit, Medline's permit, is not this today, tonight, but this is the preamble to that night. First of all, I want to thank all of you and to remind the public here that six months ago, the city of Waukegan took the leadership to vote for testing, independent testing in Lake County. And without the city of Waukegan, we wouldn't have the, the data that we have right now. We wouldn't know for certain that Vantage is emitting high amounts of ethylene oxide. We wouldn't know for certain that Medline is emitting five hundred times the EPA's actionable limit of ethylene oxide. So it was the leadership from, from the older men and older women here and the mayor that made this all possible, and we want to thank you. And that was a reminder for the public. As of the meeting that's coming up for Medline's permit, as some of the speakers already said, this permit will allow Medline to not be accountable anymore. Not this year, not this decade, not the next few generations. And it's very important to understand what the stack height is doing. What it's doing is not controlling emissions, what it's doing is dispersing ethylene oxide, so it doesn't backwash within, within the periphery of where Medline is, but it disperses further out in the community. And basically, each molecule of ethylene oxide that is being dispersed out is another opportunity to cause cancer in one of the residents, not just in Waukegan, but five, ten, twenty miles down. So I would beg the city of Waukegan Council to please show leadership again, it falls again on your shoulders unfortunately, but please show leadership again, reject Medline's permit, have them put in the best controls that they possibly can, once the Illinois EPA measures again, if the numbers are still high, that will force them to invest in further controls, or it will force them to give up ethylene oxide and go to alternative methods altogether. So, thank you very much in advance. I'm hoping, I know that there is a lot of tension here in this room today... I'm hoping, I know that there is a lot of tension here in this room today for good reasons, but we have one thing in common, all of us, and that thing is that we all breathe air, and we all love our kids. And ethylene oxide, in this case, is our public enemy number one. And I hope that we can bring this passion on the night the voting is happening for Medline's permit, and please reject that permit. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Ephraim Haradia. I'm a lifetime resident of Waukegan. I went to Waukegan Public Schools, that gentleman right there, and I were in 7th and 8th grade together. I'm not for the casino. I'm not a proponent. That ship has sailed. I know someone earlier talked about a vision, but I think you also have to learn from the mistakes from the past. I think when you look back and see some of the communities that bought into that that didn't benefit, we should take that lesson and learn from it, okay? But I think what's even more highly disturbing to me, as public officials, as elected officials, transparency, ethics need to be at the highest level. And the fact that a number of the people sitting up at this table over here have accepted and received money from the gaming community, I find it extremely disturbing that any of you have any input on how we move forward with this or who we decide to go with, okay? You need to be at a higher ethical standard than that. I'm a government employee also, so I have to be held, I'm held at that every day, all right? I am requesting and asking that those members that did receive any campaign contributions or are tied financially to the gaming community to recuse themselves from any further decision-making on moving forward with this. I think this is your opportunity. A lot of people are already saying it's a done deal. Backroom deal's already been done. They've been stamped. They bought it. Well, here's your opportunity to do the right thing, to step back and show that, yeah, I may have gotten campaign contributions, but I'm not going to be the one involved in the decision-making of this. Casinos are built on false hope, folks. People don't walk, most people that walk out of them aren't walking out smiling. They're upset. And what, so that's a risk. I don't want to see my city take that walk and come out later losing. Thank you very much.
Last three, Selena Gomez-Balores, Margaret Karasko, and Sean T. White.
That's what I get for going to dinner first. Good evenings now for something just a little bit different. As usual, I'm trying to bring you some good news from your public library. The biggest news I can give you this afternoon, or evening, is that I invite the public, if you have not already seen things, thank you mayor for pointing that out too, is the Bradbury statue unveiling this Thursday, starting at 6:30. The corners of County and Clayton will be shut down, and we'll have the symphony out there and lots of information tables, and I recognize it's the first day of school, so there will be a food truck outside, and so you can actually have your dinner out there instead of maybe hanging out at home. So, I invite you all to come out. It's very exciting. If you haven't seen the pictures online of the progress of the base being done, we're all very excited about it, and so I hope we'll all see you there. And we have some very special guests that I can't announce just yet, but I hope you all will be there to see that. Next thing, I just want to always make sure I'm mentioning, as the mayor held up the church fans that we now have, is to make sure that you are following our Facebook page for Be Counted Waukegan to receive census information throughout the year. Hasta contar, we had our first complete count committee meeting just recently, and in talking with our census engagement specialists, we'll be having a meeting specifically in Spanish with the same information. So, that announcement will be coming out soon, so do be on the lookout for that, that we'll be having a meeting completely in Spanish to provide census information to local organizations. Other than that, unless there's any questions, that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Last question.
Okay, ready? Here we go. If you notice, every single person that came to the mic and spoke in favor of a casino was an out-of-towner, did not live, does not live in Waukegan, first of all. Second of all, I want everybody to take out their cellphone, because tonight, Waukegan taxpayers, we need to do some fact-checking for fake news that's being shoved down our throat. As everyone knows, the North Point Casino and their website, they had, the big thing was the endorsement by the Black Chamber of Commerce. Well, isn't it interesting? Because if you go to their website, there's nothing. They don't have the letter there. There's nothing that says that they're endorsing the casino. Next point. The letter then goes on to say about how fabulous Bond is, superhuman, because they work so closely with him in the slot tech training program? Really? Go to your cellphone, do a search on that. Slot tech training program, Waukegan? Nothing. Nada. It doesn't exist, let alone in Spanish, okay? Let me continue on. I heard the argument about how Bond is the better choice because the argument is that he's not going to ask for waivers for giving Waukegan residents jobs. Who are we, fully, man? How can he make a promise when he's not the owner? He is not the owner of the developing company. It's like, I'm telling you, I'm going to give you this building. If I'm not the owner, how am I going to give it to you? Okay? Next. I like to communicate, hear arguments on both sides. So, I did reach out to Bond because I was quite upset because he did not take the courtesy to listen, to meet with any of the Latino candidates in the last election. And you're trying to tell me he's going to be, provide diversity? Really? Action speaks louder than words. The next thing, lack of respect, okay? I think the fact that, I mean, let's get real, and don't shoot the messenger, but I'm direct and to the point. We have an African-American male. We were just told tonight that the contractor is African-American. We were just told that the job training persons could be African-American. Hello, Waukegan is not all African-American. If Bond really was in diversity, that would not happen. He would have diversified his staff, everything. But that's not the case, okay? Waukegan is 80% Latino.
Mr. Shaun.
I'll be back.
My name is Shaun White, business owner at 29 North Genesee. Mr. Mayor and automatic board, I rise to say thank you for your approval of my license. I appreciate all that you devoted your conscience, that our democracy still works. You may not agree with liquor or gaming, but I thank you for giving me the opportunity to compete for the American dream. Please don't let select privilege, misinformation, emotional rhetoric deter small business from trying to prosper in the Waukegan area.
Thank you.
America is one of the greatest countries in the world, where if you work hard, pay your dues, and be fair, good things should happen. I have worked hard, working numerous jobs at one time. I've paid my dues, and I've been nice to others. I might not live in Waukegan, but I work in Waukegan, go to church in Waukegan, and have a business in Waukegan. So, a great part of my life is spent in Waukegan. We may not like our politicians receiving campaign funds, but it's not illegal. So, let's stop demonizing them for something that's legal under our laws and work with them to make a better Waukegan. Lastly, in my closing, I appreciate Waukegan Public Works, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and all the city workers that make Waukegan such a great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. You guys are a pleasure. Have a good time.
All right. Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming out. Really appreciate you. And we are on in the item four, consent agenda. I'm going to get a motion on the floor, then I'm going to go to who wants certain things taken out. Motion on the floor, motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Bosio, for the consent agenda, consent agenda from items A, 4A through 4X.
This is a corporation counsel, point of view. If we take, if you're going to take something out, it's usually to vote no, not to discuss, or can you take it out and discuss? You can. Vote okay?
Yeah, fine. What? Okay. So, typically what happens is for the, what we call consent agenda, so for items A, 4A through X, we're going to vote on them as one, because a lot of these, a lot of these discussions have happened in our committee. There are some things that Alderman do not want to vote on as one, so we're going to, we'll take those items out, and we've done it in the past. So, right now, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Are there any questions to the motion?
I'd like to take.
Okay. Hold on, we go to Alderman Newsome, then Alderman Turner.
Item P, there is amendment that needs to be made to that motion, and we need to add, after the police station, we need to add fire station. It was left out.
Okay.
Is there a particular fire station?
Fire station.
No. It is, but no.
I think that fire station was actually, if the documentation was attached, it's a.
But it's not on there.
It just wasn't printed.
Yes.
Okay. So, the, to, to let everyone know, item P, 4P, fire station was part of the documents, but it just was not printed on actual agenda.
It was part of the contract.
It was part of the contract. So, it's for everybody to know that. Do we still need a motion, an amendment to the motion?
You don't really need a text. But it can be done that way.
No, so we don't need that. So, just want everybody to know. Now, Alderman Turner.
Yeah, I'd like to pull out 4C, please.
C?
Yes.
4C is being, is being taken out of consent agenda, but it can be, it's then will be voted on individually once a decision has been made on the other items. Are there any other items? Alderman Taylor.
I would like to take S out of there.
You said item 4S.
Yes.
4S?
Correct. 4S.
Okay, I get it. I circled.
I know, it's hard to hear.
Anything else? All right. There's a motion on the floor and a second on the floor for the consent agenda. For the audience again, we're going to take all the items in item four, we're going to vote them, on them as one, except for item 4C and 4S. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, we're going to go for a call, I'm sorry, roll call on the vote, but they must be read. Madam Clerk will read them. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Item A, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from August 5th, 2019. Item B, motion to approve the committee of the home meeting minutes from August 5th, 2019. Item D, motion to approve vendor payments dated August 19th, 2019, in a total amount of $1,957,077.8. Item E, motion to approve regular payroll dated August 16th, 2019, in the total amount Motion to approve elected official and civil service stipend payroll dated August 16th, 2019, in the total amount of $7,191.66. Item G, motion to approve BBLC Holiday Cash Out Payroll dated August 16th, 2019, in the total amount of $2,715.05. Item H, motion to approve Local 150 Comp Time Cash Out Payroll dated August 16th, 2019, in the total amount of $665.98. Item I, motion to approve application fee waiver for Labor Day Party at Puerto Rican Society, special events permit pending submission of proper paperwork and staff approval. Item J, motion to approve the award of a contract to PMH Senac Inc., the lowest qualified bidder relative to water plant sludge demodering and disposal in the amount of $132,762 for each of the 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021 fiscal years for a grand total of $265,000, $265,524. This matter was heard at the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item K, motion to grant an exception to the competitive bidding process pursuant to Section 2 dash 458 subsection I-3 Government Joint Purchasing Act and approve the award of a contract to Burr's Equipment in the amount of $120,510.30 for the purchase of a water department backhoe. This project utilizes 2018 C Water and Sewer Bond Funds. This matter was heard at the Finance and Purchasing Committee.
Mayor, can we take out L?
Okay. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay.
L is being skipped, will be taken out, okay?
Item M, motion to grant an exception to the competitive bidding process pursuant to Section 2 hyphen 458 subsection I-3 Government Joint Purchasing Act and approve the award of a contract to Sutton Ford in the amount of $148,019 for the purchase of a water department truck. This project utilizes 2018 C Water and Sewer Bond Funds. This matter was heard at the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item N, motion to grant a good faith waiver to the competitive bidding process pursuant to Section 2 hyphen 458 subsection I-7 and approve the award of a contract to Burr's Equipment in order to make vehicle and equipment parts purchases as necessary during the 2019, 2020 fiscal year for not to exceed the amount of $45,000. This matter was heard at the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item O, motion to grant a good faith waiver to the competitive bidding process pursuant to Section 2 hyphen 458 subsection I-7 and approve the award of a contract with dealer and materials in order to make sand and materials purchases as necessary during the 2019, 2020 fiscal year for not to exceed the amount of $45,000. This matter was heard at the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item P, motion to approve the award of a contract for Bluebird Architects and Engineers following a request for proposal process relative to City Hall, Public Works, and Police Station Facility and Bluebird Project Oversight in the amount not to exceed $160,000. This project utilizes 2018 BPO. This matter was heard at the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item Q, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to execute a grant agreement with the Department of Justice and further to enter into a related memorandum of understanding between the city of Waukegan, Calumia Lake, and city of Zion, Wellington, to the 2019 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Jett Program. This matter was heard at the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item R, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to execute grant agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the 2020 STEM Grant for highway safety purposes. This matter was heard at the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item T, an ordinance limiting the vacant structure registry. Item U, motion to approve a contract with ProChamps for vacant structure registry monitoring. Item V, resolution ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 473. Item W, motion to approve all route of sale applications. Item X, motion to approve all lab quality applications.
There's a motion on the floor, items, there's been a motion and a second for consent agenda, exception of item C, L, and S. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Bosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Motion to pass, Karen. Item 4C, motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Newsome, to approve, to ratify the reportment of Sylvia England, the Waukegan Public Library Board. Sylvia, I know, I saw you in here, what's your standing up for playing? All right.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for your continued support and dedication to our library board. It's pretty natural, being a former educator, Waukegan Public School System. Appreciate you. And I'm assuming Mr. Alderman. And I'm assuming Mr. Alderman Turner took your name off so he can, we can do exactly what we just did.
That's right. I wanna make sure that Sylvia receives the recognition that she is, is due. She's been a fabulous asset to our community for a number of years. And I also wanna point out, a lot of folks don't know, but, uh, Mrs. England has established the first African-American museum in Waukegan. She's in process of development. When, when's it gonna open, really be open for the public, Sylvia? Okay, great. Thank you and congratulations.
And, and the mother of world famous.
Whoa.
Bob Nettis.
World famous violinist. That's right.
If you've not heard of the England, just go to YouTube.
Yay, that's right.
Right? And, and you know what, I wanna bring it up, Mrs. Little without order, but, you know, old things just come on my brain. But I talked, we have a Waukegan Sports Hall of Fame, and I talked about this before, maybe Mrs. England, she's got time out, she has. But we need to get a entertainment and music Waukegan Hall of Fame.
Yeah.
I mean, we got so many musicians and actors. It, it just dropped my brain today because, uh, John Hill, I know John Hill is an actor, he was back at school and he spoke. He came and saw me, that coach him in football, he just, I'm like, man, we gotta get on this, we gotta make a, uh, entertainment Waukegan Hall of Fame. Not just for athletes, but for people that would entertain.
Hey, can I validate that? She's, if you've never been by her, um, museum, I really wanna engage you to try to do that. And she's doing phenomenal job at that.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, someone's asking the location. You gotta speak up.
Five oh three North Genesee Street. Five oh three, Joe North Genesee.
By appointment only.
All right, all right. But that being said, I'm just gonna do a, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's passed, Karen. Uh, item L, motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Bolton, uh, to approve the award of the contract to Campanella and Son, the lowest qualified bidder, relative to demolition issue, delivery of a structure in order to make stone more improvements in the amount of a hundred twenty-seven thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars. This project utilizes twenty eighteen C Water and Sewer Bonds Funds. This matter was heard at the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Any questions to the motion?
I have a question, Mayor, is there any cost to the city on this?
We paying this cost?
Yeah, this, this is coming out of, uh, the GO bonds, a one hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's for the, that's just for the demolition?
And the repairs.
Oh, and the repairs to the, uh, stone more.
And this is the seventeen oh one circle.
Yeah, seventeen oh one circle.
Mm-hmm. The home that we purchased because the garage was built over a sewer line, storm sewer that didn't have authorization from the city to build. So we had to take possession of it and now we're taking it down. I guess it was sliding into the, where was it going into?
It was going into the ravine.
Yeah.
It was going into the ravine. Here, any, any other questions? All right. Item L, roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florrie.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Motion's passed, Karen. Item S, motion by Alderman, uh, motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Turner.
Discussion.
Let me get the motion on the floor, any discussion. Uh, the motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Turner, to retain Johnson and Solte to provide developer submission, review, and advisory service for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year for the total retain of forty-five thousand plus reasonable out-of-pocket expenses. This matter was heard in the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Alderman Taylor, questions?
I would like to hold this over to the next meeting if possible. I, I am all, and I have been one who specifically asked for an economic study. What I really was looking for was an economic study that wasn't just based on which one of these six casinos was kind of their, who they thought was best. I was looking for an overall study that would tell us if a casino was even the, the most, um, financially feasible option at this point. Um, what effects it would have on gaming and other parts of our community. Um, what would be the, you know, net gain or loss of jobs in the city? So I wanted a little bit more extensive, um, but I would like to have a little bit more time to do a little bit more search on this because this is the first time I've heard of them. I just need a little bit more time myself to kinda go through and do some work on them. And so that's, that's why I would like to hold it over.
Well, let me just say this, ma'am, we have some time constraints here of when we need to present to, uh, send a possible developers to, you know, a gaming board. Don't mind that you need to get some more time, but getting them on board does not, will not delay you getting your information that you need. So I, I, I'm suggesting that we move forward. If there's some more other things you wanna bring, other consultants, bring them to us so we can see who they are, uh, regarding that. But at this particular point in time, we really need to move forward in getting us to help us understand where we're going, okay?
Well, my only que- question is, again, the public is asking a lot of questions. Frankly, as an Alderman, I've asked to see some of these packages and we have to set up a time to go and see the entire package.
Absolutely.
Um, we're not given this information. So it, it's a little hard for me to say, I wanna put all my trust in a consulting company that I heard about on Friday at five o'clock. Um, I know there, there is a rush here, but this is a decision that's going to affect this community going forward. I don't think you just shoot from the hip and say, well, Friday at five o'clock, here's the agenda, figure it out.
Well, stop, 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 Alderman. I, I, you know, I bet you, you did not have this until Friday at five o'clock. Obviously, I thought, by the way, you might, you probably did because we met with the consulting group on Friday at nine thirty. So the information we got, we immediately got that to you because we know we, we, we need help in evaluating all of these proposals. This is the help that-
I don't, I don't deny that.
I disagree, so that's why I'm saying, let's move forward. The consulting has nothing to do with you doing your due diligence and finding out if these are, uh, this is a market study you need. Are, are you looking for the city to do the market study? Are you going, are you finding someone who's gonna help you do a market study? I, I guess I'm trying to get-
Well, am I supposed to pay for the market study myself? Is that what you want? Or like, are we, I mean, I thought that's what, if we're using city funds for this, that's really what the whole market study should be.
Why do you- Well, I, I'm, I'm asking you, I'm not telling you, I'm saying, are you looking for a market study to be conducted regarding this? I'm asking.
Yeah.
All right.
Just interject. I, I understand, I understand where the time is strength. I also understand Alderman Taylor's concern for more information. I don't know if Johnson Consulting could do the information that Alderman Taylor wants. I think their, their focus is just on casino and gaming and that aspect. I understand she wants to, um, and I can't think that, in other words, you wanted a land feasibility study, is this, is that what you want?
Yeah, I think we need to go a little bit more in depth and, and look at, will there be job losses, job gains? What will be, you know, will it, how will it impact our, um, resources as far as our police, our fire, um, and other city resources? I know, like, I asked for this, for an economic study on June twenty-first, and I haven't heard anything about it. At that time, I was told it was too early. Well, now all of a sudden, it's getting down to the wire. We have to have it right now. And I, I just feel like I just need a couple more weeks to figure this out.
Could we add, I mean, I didn't, because he said Mr. Johnson's not here, he left, did he?
Yeah, he left.
Yeah, but is there any way we could ask? I, I don't wanna put in the wellness spot, she probably doesn't know, she's a hell of a workman, but-
Well, I did ask in committee, and it's, at this point, that's not what they're being slated to do.
Right, I mean, it may come back with a little higher price tag, I don't know. Uh, but, I mean, I'm just trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to find out there.
I agree. Well, then, let's, let's find out from them. Let's find out from them if that's something they can do. The task that we asked for was things that we thought were that we needed help in. So that's why we asked for that. So if that's something we, we, we wanna do, then let's just give permission. If they can do those things, then we move forward. But tonight, we need to get that information to us.
But what happens if they can't do it? Do we hire somebody?
Then we have to find somebody who can, Alderman. I'm, I'm only giving you what we were asking them for. That's the, that's the task that we asking for, what they came in for. So if they, if, uh, if it's, uh, another study that you're looking for, then so be it. As far as, just so the public understand, it sounds like there's some miscommunication going on. It's not that we don't want the Alderman to see it. As we, we told you all, there's, there's, there's information that we cannot release. If we don't want that information getting out, then we become liable for that. You were informed about that, Alderman.
Yeah, and I agree with that.
Okay, I mean, what your position is that we did not want you to see that. It's not that we didn't want any Alderman to see. We just wanna make sure that we guard the information that was given to us, which we've done in the past over the last eighteen years of my career, that we're doing that.
Well, I just wonder how is it that, like, I understand there's probably, you know, information in there that might, we don't want necessarily the public to see at this point. But by the same token, we have one of our bidders going out telling people, I saw them at a tent this weekend, telling them, oh, we will give you a job. Now, I don't understand why are our bidders out there giving information when we're not even being given information? All of this should be kept quiet across the board. Either that or other developers should be able to put their websites out and their things so that the public can see them too.
Stop, stop. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm serious, but they can.
Yeah.
This is, we didn't tell them to do that. The, the, these individual proposer of bidders can do exactly what they wanna do at this point. It's not up to us to tell them not or to do. We're just trying to guard what we have committed to do within the, uh, within the confines of RFQ, that's all. So if that was the case, if it was this case, it's not mine or yours. If the other bidders choose to do that, then so be it. And if you know someone who's, who's, who is a bidder, tell them to go out. We don't mind. I've got calls from the school district saying, who are they? I said, well, go, go over to the website, those are the names, look them up and go from there. That's what they're doing. So, but to, uh, I, I, why, I appreciate and understand your position. I believe right now that we need to move forward with this, and if there is other services, Alderman, all of you, there's urban services that you are looking for in regards to this, let us know. But I will remind you, the reason that this particular firm was picked because we had a search out, or we, the feelers out, everyone has, uh-
Conflicts.
Conflicts of interest because of the different proposals that are out there. So that's one of the reasons that this particular firm was picked. And if I'm not mistaken, we've worked with them before. What have we worked with them before? Which pro, oh, Skipmore Orange and Merrill Project, yeah. So that's, we have a little history with them, public, just so you understand. They've done work in our community before. They understand our community. They spent about six to seven months on it, the, uh, Skipmore Orange and Merrill's plan for us. So this is not so unforeign to the city of Waukegan.
I understand that.
All right? So I appreciate that, uh, let's move forward tonight. If there's other things that you're looking for, if they can do them, let's go and ask, find out what that cost is, we'll get back to you. Or if there's other companies that you know that are out there who does this kind of the work that you're asking for, then we go from there. But at this particular point in time, we, we simply need to move forward to get this information to make the best decision for us. Thank you, ma'am, and I do appreciate it. Um, so we wanna, we wanna take the dollar amount off and then wait till we see what their information that they're asking for, or?
We can add the, uh-
We can add the other services too?
We can have the benefits of the contract for a right.
Okay, we'll do it, we'll do it that way. So that's what we're doing tonight. And with respect to Alderman Taylor's position, uh, of, of these other items that she would like to have and see if they can get to us within a time, a certain time period. Um, all right, with that being said, roll call, please.
What's the motion?
The, 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 the motion is, will be as is, and with respect to the request of Alderman Taylor, and Alderman Taylor, if you don't mind, let's get those written down so we can make sure we have exactly what we're, what we're gonna be asking them to do for us or looking for other, another company, another, another company to do that for us within that time period.
One quick question. How long are they gonna be working on this? Like, I guess what I'm saying is, do we have time to find another company?
Well, well, let's, that's, uh, well, let's do this. Let's ask them, since this is what they do, if there's another, if, if they're, if, what we're asking, we're asking, what, things that we're asking them to do, they don't have the expertise within their organization. Let's get a reference from them. I, right now, I know them, or they've worked with us, and to be honest, they're about the only ones available at this point. Now, if anyone knows of anyone else, feel free to give it to us. This is open. We're trying to get information to make the best decision. But I can find out first thing in the morning, let all of you know collectively exactly what they can and cannot do.
Okay.
All right, all right. The motion as it stands, and if we need to do a, an amendment or a amendment, we'll do it at that time. And I will inform the Alderman. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Florrie.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
All right, items, oh no, uh, item number five, reports communication, our monthly church report has been filed. Doctor Schwab, if anything you need to add to that?
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
All right, all right, thank you.
Report's been filed.
All right. Item six.
With the clerk.
With the clerk. Monthly church report has been filed with the clerk. Item six, uh, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager. Motion, resolution authorized exposure property located four fifteen was McKelley Avenue. Uh, this matter was held in the Community Development Committee.
Alderman, I mean, Mayor, may I have comments?
Alderman Bolton.
Um, I have to address this. I put this back on the agenda because I, I really need to talk to you all as my colleagues. So I really need to express myself, uh, chairman. I have to openly let you know that I was offended because you didn't even call me to the floor when this was tabled. And so moving forward, I'd like us to collaborate better in that way, that respect. And then Alderman Taylor, you tabled this, and I'm shocked that you tabled this without even engaging me in discussion on the side, you know, letting me know your thoughts, and I felt that I should have been the one to table this because I am the one that talked to the constituents, not you. So moving forward, I think you're in advance that we could collaborate better because as colleagues, we need to work together as a team to develop community.
But you were here when we tabled it.
Let me finish.
Okay.
So the reason why this is back on the agenda, uh, to remind you all that, first of all, this house, a murder was committed in this house. Secondly, it's a substandard lot. And also, I just received a report of how many calls that this house did because the house is constantly broken into and there's weapons found in the house, and, you know, it's depreciating the neighborhood. And so I think about, you know, it's only fair, I want my ward to look like you, everyone else's ward. Safety is an issue in the, in the first ward, and I am trying to advocate for the constituents in the first ward. So let's look at some things. So we, uh, Tina, I think, I understand that on the agenda, when we look at two twenty-one Genesee, I believe that we're, you know, we, I know the issue on the table is about the value. I understand that was, you know, question of the value and what it costs it is to the city. So when we look at other projects that we're doing, we're paying, say like two twenty-one South Genesee, I believe we're paying like the utilities, we're handling the liability of that location. And when I look at, uh, another location where we demolished a house, when it was destroyed by, uh, affected by a sewer, and I believe, uh, I think that project was like seventy-five thousand or something like that.
Five, the house was a hundred and three thousand.
And we paid a hundred and-
Close the cost, and then the emigration was approved tonight, it was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The rebuilding of the sewer was approved tonight for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, that was stabilized, it's a bank.
So, you know, I'm just asking that we go ahead and resolve this issue. So, you know, I'm just asking that we go ahead and resolve this issue. And so those are my concerns. So let's collaborate and move forward. Mayor, can we resolve this tonight?
I broke it up. Also, I, all I wanted was a assessment of the value of the property. I agree with everything. It was a problem property. It, I drove by there, it's a small lot, I don't know how a house was ever on there. And I'm not opposed to all that. But the way it was handled, now that's not anybody's fault. It's just the way we did it, selling this to that, it just wasn't handled the right way. Going forward, we're going to do this with properties that need to be taken down. We have to have a process of how we're going to do it. I get it, some things you just got to buy, tear them down, and move forward. It's just, it is what it is. But in my mind, we didn't quite handle this the right way either. But did it need to come down? Yes, it needed to come down. How we did it, we didn't do it the right way at all.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Can I say something?
Alderman Taylor.
Um, I don't think, you made that argument when we actually bought the house because an investor bought it after the murder for thirty-eight thousand and then we paid fifty-eight thousand dollars for it. So we have, I think we all agree that the house needed to come down. But the land will have some value in and of itself. And if I learned nothing from anybody on this council, it was from Alderman Tempest, is we get what we can for the property when we can get it. And I think this is money that the city is spending and that we've already invested in the house by purchasing it to begin with and paying more a year later than what the investor bought it for at thirty-eight thousand. So it's not that I'm against at all about it not being looked at. It's, there is some kind of value now in that empty lot. And we've talked about city property, how we need to sell some of the city property. There is value that will be in that land, and we need to keep that in mind too.
I believe that it's going to be split between the two properties. Don't forget about that aspect.
But I thought it was going to be given to them.
It is, yeah, but it's always going to be split so they can put a driveway in there. And if you go by, that's about all you could get, probably a driveway for each one of the residences. In my whole point, like, get it assessed, see how much it's worth. And if we're going to split it, have the residents pay something for it, even if it's a payment. Now, I know it's going to go back on the tax rule, but a driveway is not going to generate much, it doesn't have any tax value. And I get it, again, I get it, I understand. It was a problem property. We needed to take it down. We waited too long to take it down. The way we did it didn't quite sit right with people. Is there any way we can assess it and go to the homeowners and say, listen, you got to give us a little bit for the land? I don't know what it's worth, so I'm going to... It ain't very big, it's about, it's about, why isn't it shared all the way?
Your house should have never been on there.
But...
Your house shouldn't have been on there.
No, so, I mean, it's not, it's probably, I don't know, I'm not very good at assessing land, but it can't be, I wouldn't even think it's worth twenty thousand dollars.
Wow.
I mean, is that ten, five? What does it worth?
It's a twenty-five foot lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that was my own point.
Let me, let me... So, let me clarify some things here. The city of Waukegan, as you all know, we did a survey on what properties that we own back in probably late, mid twenty-seventeen, early twenty-eighteen. What did we do? We come up and we found that we own several properties that a lot of us didn't even know we owned. Some of them are substandard lots. Some of them are properties that people have been taking care of for the last twenty years. And the, I said at that time, why are we holding on to these properties? I thought we all agreed. I put a project in Noel's hands to assess, to get a list of all of our properties, the PIN numbers, recommendation what we should, should not do with them. We then moved out to have appraisal on all of those properties. We're about, what, three quarters of the way done, half the way done, Noel?
I think so, we got to go ahead today.
So we're doing exactly what we said we're going to do. The question will become to this council, what do you want to do with these properties? And, you know, and when you say, when you talk about the value of them, the value of them staying off the books is worse than us sitting here debating what to do with them. This 415 specifically, since someone mentioned it's by the mayor's house, then the mayor is going to profit from this house being tore down. I'm going to give you a little history. The house that I live in right now had a dumping, a dumping sign on it. A no dumping sign, everybody. That's the house I live in right now. I bought out of college. The house that my mom and my siblings and I moved in. The first house I bought, a HUD home. We fixed it up. Didn't know what I was doing. Next to it was a house that said no dumping on it. I'm sorry, a lot that says no dumping on it. Alderman Florin, you brought to my attention, this same house in your area. What did I do with that property? I bought that property and built a home for me and my family. That's how you build homes. Julie Donovan was in this room tonight. When I became an Alderman in nineteen ninety-nine, you know who helped me build the First Ward back up? Habitat for Humanity. You know what they did? There was an alley, for those who don't know, it's called the Cove, affectionately known as the corner. Well, sir, I gave you yours, now give me mine. Thank you, sir. In that alley, we had to vacate the alley, reconstruct the homes over there so Habitat can put about five to six homes to rebuild a block. That's what we do. So if it seems like we're giving something away, we don't give anything away. We give it to better the community. That circle drive house, you know what that house was appraised for? It was appraised at market value of seventy-five thousand dollars. All we really had to do was tear down the garage. We would have taken care of the situation for the city of Waukegan. But what did we say? Along with the Alderman of the ward, that family can't live in that house with that. They just can't. So we chose to buy the entire property, or whatever, a hundred and three thousand, a hundred and four thousand, so that family can be stabilized. And our golden objective was then to take that and divide the property with those on the north and the south. That was the goal. And that should always be our golden objective when we dealing with this. A lot of these are going to come. Sherman Place over here, we owned about four or five lots over there. Gentlemen comes into our commute, comes into the mayor's office. Mayor had been cutting his grass for the last twenty years. Can you just give me the property? We looked at it, substandard lot, it's close to his, gave him a couple of rules what you had to do, and we gave it to him. You're going to have a lot of decisions like that on the First Ward, some of the Second, the Sixth Ward, and the Fourth Ward. That's where those substandard lots, that's where they were built. That's old Waukegans. And that's just where we're at right now. So I hear and I appreciate your understanding of this, but there's going to be some situations, it's not worth our time and energy. Put it back on the tax rule. And that's where we're at. So that's where we're at. With that, there is a vote tonight on it. Alderman, there's a motion on the floor by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Turner. Ma'am, thank you, Ms. White. Thank you. Uh, second by Alderman Turner.
Yes.
All right. Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Florin.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
All right. Motion. We move on. Item seven, new business, they're being done. Item eight, or this is, uh, item...
Oh, no, we want that.
Huh? Yeah. And item nine, closing. Items, item Alderman's time. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Rivera.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. I just wanted to, again, thank everyone that came out to the council meeting and spoke. I understand that it's getting to be a laborious process at this time, but, but, but thank you very much for your patience and your time. Uh, big congratulations out there to the fire department and the dispatch for receiving the Flight for Life Award. That's a great, great exposure. Congratulations to the students, recognized for their leadership and academic achievements from the Waukegan to college. And a big thank you to the Donavons for their overwhelming contribution to our community. Thank you.
Alderman Florin.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd also like to thank all the residents for coming out and speaking, letting us know your feelings about a potential casino. I personally believe an issue as important as this should be put before the residents for a vote. I also want to thank my colleagues for voting to pass the firefighters' contract tonight. I'm glad we've been able to put this behind us and support our firefighters. I believe as a community, one of the most important things we do is provide police and fire protection for our citizens, and I'm glad that we now have a contract with our firefighters. Recently, there was a block party in the Castle Crest area in my ward. They hired a DJ without disclosing their intent to do that. They played the music so loud, it was loud enough to rattle walls in area homes. Hosts of block parties need to know we have a noise ordinance in Waukegan. Getting a block party permit does not allow you to violate the noise ordinance. The whole situation blew up into a mess. People were calling the police department and were told there was nothing that could be done. I spoke to the resident who hosted the party, and he wrote this thank you note. I would like to apologize for any inconvenience or disturbance I may have caused to anyone living in the Devonshire area during our block party Saturday, August tenth. The purpose of having the event was to peacefully bring the neighborhood together, to meet one another and build lasting relationships and make a better community where we live. Throughout the day, I had nothing but positive feedback from everyone who attended, which included the Waukegan Fire Department and Police K-9 Unit. I wish I knew of any issues or concerns anyone in the area had so they could have been addressed immediately. I was not aware of any until after our event by an officer at nine PM and two days later from our Alderman. Again, my sincere apologies, and I hope that this will not negatively impact any future attempts to bring our neighborhood together in the future. I would just like everyone up here to know, you need to, you know, emphasize with people, I'm now going to get a flyer printed and take it to every home in that neighborhood and let them know there's a noise ordinance and what the ramifications of breaking the noise ordinance are. I want people to have block parties, I want them to have fun, but I don't think you should disturb the whole neighborhood and the process. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Um, I want to remind people that, why we talk about just the District Sixty starting school this week, we also have Waukegan residents that are Blue Devils and Wildcats, and they started this week. Some started today, some will start on Tuesday. And then District Sixty will start on Thursday. So the ninth ward has all three, and I want to make sure that I recognize that. Tonight was an interesting night. And what I will tell residents is, I ran as an independent. I've always been an independent thinker. I want to assess a casino fairly for everybody. I have no, this person or that person is in or out. I'm open to everything. I do know that there's been a strong push. Nobody knows it better than I do. I ran in a campaign with how much money spent against me. I was run off the road. They tried to poison my dogs. I've had multi-things happen around my home. Thank goodness I have security cameras everywhere. But what I will say to you is, I think our residents deserve, whether it be a corporate entity like Medline or whether it be a corporate corporation like a casino, we need to look at these things honestly and be fair to everyone. And I appreciate residents coming on both sides. But I also want to make sure that we understand that going out and saying that you're going to employ X amount of minorities, we have taken out our ordinance that says you need to, like, we're going to have one, whatever we used to have, one third. Now we do it through minority businesses. So that's how you would do that. I don't think anybody can guarantee anybody jobs at this point in time. There's no contract yet that's been awarded. And hopefully, we will make a fair and honest decision on that. And then we start talking about these other issues. But talking about them now of who's going to get jobs, who's going to get this, who's going to get that, to me is premature at this point in time. So I just want you to know, going forward, at least from my point of view, I will look at everything fair and honestly. And from my point of view, I will hear all sides. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I want to give a shout out once again to Julie Donovan and Habitat for Humanity. She has definitely demonstrated leadership and great achievement. And she's personally building two additional homes in my ward. And as it was mentioned before, she's been responsible for a great deal of billing, building a lot of Habitat homes, including mine, because I presently live in a Habitat home. Also like to announce, we have four weeks, I'm going, within four weeks, I'm going to be doing another operation clean sweep. And that date, because some have been calling, the date is September twentieth. And that will be eight to three P M. And the location will be Belvedere and Peaceley in Waukegan. And then I want to give a shout out to Renee Whitehead, is celebrating her thirty years in, as a part of business within my ward. And she's been operating for thirty years. And I just want to congratulate her openly. Thirdly, Mary's mission at six forty-two Drive, Martin Luther King, they're planning and asking for volunteers, it's called a Day of Hope. And they're, I guess you could say, revamping that program and perfecting it so it'll be more effective in our community. Thank you again.
Alderman Seager.
I too would like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Donovan. A lot of hard work, I say Waukegan, a lot of fine people. And I wish them the best. Also, I'd like to thank Paul Edwards, Mike Hewitt, Pat Neale. The two trucks that were handled over on Paul Street dumpster. It was an operation clean sweep.
Wow.
And it turned out real good. And people cooperated to the best of their ability. I was down there, John Walton. Thank you very much.
Alderman Mosio.
Yeah, coming again at McKinley. Again, it needed to be taken down, but the process really did it. It just was, it was screwed up. I mean, hopefully now that we have the land bank and stuff like that, we'll be able to fix them off and take it down, buy the property, do something with it. For us to buy it, it wasn't right. At the end of the day, it's better for it to go on the tax rule between the two residents. We failed, so maybe if we can get the residents to purchase it, divide the purchase price, then maybe we can get it approved. Because at the end of the day, the city's got to get out of land business, especially that little stuff like that. You can't give this stuff away. They got to pay something for it. Being up on the council with Alderman Tempest, they got to pay something for it.
for it. So, let's move it forward, let's find out what it's worth, and tell the residents, hey, if you want it, here's, divide in half, you can have it. I know it's going to get it back on the tax roll for what we want, but the value of the tax is not too much, it's a driveway, you put two driveways on it, but we, we got to do a better job and not leave you stuff like that, that just, we didn't handle that right at all. Thank you.
I apologize, I just want to say thank you to my constituents, I mean, my colleagues for hearing me out. Thank you.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, in the fourth ward, we'll be having another ward meeting on Tuesday, August twenty-seventh at Gail Juarez Middle School. It'll start exactly at six o'clock P.M., refreshment will start at five-thirty. Also, I encourage our residents in the fourth ward to continue to have block parties. Also, I want to give a shout out to Miss Figaro and the YCC, they did an excellent job in the fourth ward, cleaning alleys. Also, I would encourage us to look at grants for summer youth programs so we can hire more of our youths during the summertime, those who are fifteen and on up, to, uh, help us in the city. Also, Operation Clean Sweep, uh, I will getting, will be getting out to you, uh, those dates and times that we will be, uh, putting out the dumpsters. Also, I want to, uh, thank, uh, Mike Hewitt for all the work he's done with the patching of the streets, the varmints breaks, all the things, the, the trees that were blown down, Bureau of Department's been doing an excellent job, thank you very much.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. I wanted to touch a little bit more, the mayor had talked about the senior rebate for the water. I wanted to read something regarding that rebate. Um, the senior rebate program will commence for the month of September, beginning September first and ending September thirtieth. Qualifying homeowners with the following real estate exemptions as determined by the county. Senior homestead, senior, uh, assessment freeze, returning veteran, homestead for disabled persons, disabled veterans, standard homestead and disabled veterans noted on the resolution that was passed will receive a credit of thirty-three percent of the total of their minimum bills incurred in the calendar year twenty eighteen. The process to receive the credit will be to complete the application and submit a copy of their twenty eighteen tax assessment to confirm the exemption. The water division staff will verify the information and submit to management for proper credit to the customer's account. I'd like to say to, um, mainly to the fifth ward residents, for those that don't have access to a computer, there's an application that you need to fill out. I'm going to make copies of this application. If you need one, please contact me and I'll bring them to you so that you can get them filled out. Uh, you can call me at eight four seven, four nine four, four one nine zero. Thank you.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Uh, excuse me. Uh, I want to give a kind of a, I had intended to give a one hundred days in office report because it's been just, just a little bit over that, but I got a brand new phone today and a lot of that information I had, I lost. I'm going to recap some things, uh, I may have touched on them previously, but just bear with me. Uh, we did have our last, uh, Clean Sweep in the, uh, sixth ward, I want to give great, uh, round of applause and kudos to the, uh, Public Works guys, um, Torrey Wardship and Damon Washington, of course, Mike Hewitt and, uh, Pat Needham, who also helped put that together. This was, I didn't think we were going to have anybody show up for that because I had put the notice out way back in June, but actually, uh, the dumpster was three-quarters full less than half an hour after we started. And I actually had to start sending the guys up to dump, take, um, materials in the, in the city trucks and take it and dump it at the yards and come back for extra loads. I even had neighbors follow them up to the yards. We had a tremendous turnout for that event. A couple of things that are coming up, uh, the crawl, there's going to be a new crosswalk painted at the bus stop on Sheridan Road and Franklin Street. It was requested by several of our residents at a, uh, neighborhood watch meeting to put crosswalks along Sheridan, uh, where there are bus stops. Uh, the only place we can do it quickly is at Franklin because of the, uh, necessity to have a, uh, handicap accessible curb at those crosswalks. But we'll get that done at Sheridan and we'll get a repaint of existing crosswalks at Sheridan and Glen Flora, uh, which is by Victory Hospital, that's, uh, that's on the calendar as well. Uh, we've already begun doing some of the priority sidewalk and, uh, storm sewer water repairs in the sixth ward. Our partner ComEd has begun to, and I think they've completed now, uh, but they're replacing the lights in all the alleys with LED lights, trimming trees, there's an entire program for trimming trees along the power lines, that's underway. Uh, ComEd is additionally putting in a series of power poles and restringing power wires, uh, power cables. Uh, the mayor and I, and, uh, Mike Hewitt and I have talked at length over the last many months and it continues to be a priority effort that, uh, or priority focus, I should say, to do something about the building of Democratic Headquarters at, uh, seven oh nine North Avenue that has not gone off the table, we just, we're working through the process. Attorney Long is, uh, diligently doing his, or doing his due diligence in, in moving that process along. Also, uh, we have an issue with Saint John's Church on Greenwood where a wall has, uh, fallen off into the sidewalk. We're working with the owners and pastors, et cetera, and the contractors, we're going to get some resolution there. And finally, um, for my neighbors at four forty-six Hickory, we're going to have something done about the, uh, deteriorated staircase. And finally, I do, I had hoped as part of my one hundred days in office report to give , uh, some more detail about the number of police calls in the sixth ward. There's a lot more going on down there that, uh, that we are commonly made aware of, and, um, if anyone wants to contact me once I have my phone functional again, I'll give you some more detail. But the police are doing a fantastic job, there's a, there's a, a lot of calls going on in the sixth ward and, uh, the police are being very responsive and they're clearing these calls, you're taking, making arrests and ensuring their, their properties and their family are safe, so that's all I have, thank you.
One more thing I needed to add with the senior rebate, you must be a homeowner to get this rebate, and you must, your, uh, water bill must be in good standing as well. Thank you.
All right. Oh, wait, can I say, just let me add one more thing. Um, so, I took office on May sixth, uh, we got a new code compliance officer in the sixth ward on May twenty-third, and to date, three hundred and sixty notices of violations, uh, I think sixty citations. And again, how that works, we'll use, uh, lawn grass as an example, you get a notice or that, hey, you got grass, you got to cut it, you don't cut, you don't get it cut, you get a notice of violation. If you still don't get it cut, you come back and you get a citation. So, we have three hundred and sixty notices of violations since, uh, May twenty-third, and those, you got to remember, these are not all new things that just came up, these are a lot of old problems that had gone, you know, kind of, you know, well, we don't worry about that. And that is why, again, and it's no reflection on the previous code compliance officer, but my first order of business in taking office was to get a new guy in who had, um, put new eyes on it, new look at the sixth ward and these code issues because one of the things I ran on was neighborhood cleanliness along with public safety, so, thank you.
All right, that's about it. With that being said, everybody don't forget to be counted twenty, twenty Waukegan Census. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Kirkwood to adjourn all those in favor.
All right.
Thank you, everybody, for bearing with us.